That creates a little bit of a problem for us, not only from the mapping and G I S perspective, but also from the field responders as well. And we'll show you a few pictures of why that's articulate. So take for instance Key Town State, we're still at Key Town Road now. Currently there are nine lots or potential nine lots that are using one access point from Key Town Road. Now, not all of those lots have been asked for an address yet, but uh, one, two, three, four, five of them have. As you can see, it's, it's pretty winding up through there. So you have all of these potential address points, nine, and they're coming in on one access point from Key Town Road, and their address as such. Another one we'll get is eighteen forty-three Garrison Branch. There are eight lots that are accessed from one point on Garrison Branch Road. And this was done, this was addressed before I went or became the director there. And what they did was they just used eighteen forty-three and issued letters beyond that. Personally, I hate letters. I don't want a letter attached to that address if we can avoid that. And that's a whole different discussion. If you want to talk about that, I'm, I'm glad to share my opinion on that. Fifteen hundred block Garrison Branch Road, just right down the road. There are four homes that are currently on this one access point from Garrison Branch. And there are two more lots that just haven't been, the partial lots haven't been updated down there in the lower left, or lower right in corner. Uh, as you can see, four homes that, that are using that one access point from Garrison Branch Road. Now, the five ninety-three Peedy Branch Road, same thing here. This was addressed before I got there. You can see you have nine lots and they all have five ninety-three and they're sharing, sharing a letter. But that goes quite a ways down there. I, I'm not even sure how far it goes back, roughly four thousand feet. And not to bore you with, with geeky stuff, but if I was to open up that, that picture there, you would see that about three thousand feet to the left is Shum Pike. The problem that we run into sometimes with routing or the, the mobile data terminals or the A D Ls, automatic vehicle locators and first responder vehicles, is you dispatch them to say five ninety-three, I can't tell what that is, uh, L maybe, uh, Peedy Branch Road. And because that's really nine feet closer to Shum Pike, then the computer wants to navigate them from Shum Pike. There's no way they can access that address from Shum Pike. And so, uh, perfectly, sir. So we, we've had that, that issue a few times with passing. Uh, with, with other, other addresses around the county, we've managed to fix those. Uh, so, Josh, how do you?
Sorry, that, that doesn't work.
Oh, sorry. So this is just a little bit bigger picture of that five ninety-three Peedy Branch Road. You can see all the lots there that are, um, that are accessed from that one point on Peedy Branch.
All those that you've now shown, are those all come off that one?
Yes, sir. You know, all these addresses.
It's like, say, five, like, three, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, all that.
And so you can see my, my chicken scratch, um, there by looking in the red. You can see where the driveway goes down to that, that very last lot, so. Sort of winding down through there. And I'll bring another point about the, the condition of these, these driveways here in a few minutes as well, so. Uh, twenty-one hundred block of Highway twenty-five, you have six lots that are accessed from, there are two address points out there. So in the, in the lower right end corner down here, you can see that, um, that home actually, you can, you can access that driveway that's parallel to Highway twenty-five and, uh, from, from that home's driveway there. Or right down there, I think it's probably the drive that the access from Highway twenty-five that most of those residents used. Yeah, I mean, that's, that's a pretty, um, pretty decent length of driveway there that, that really could be a, a private road designation and then we could route our, our first responders from. Running Creek Private Court, uh, this is a very interesting visit in the past few weeks, which is what's spawned, uh, uh, inquiries, Josh, Mr. Sutton. Um, this is a development, uh, now it's cracked down to six lots. I think initially they, they threw out like eight lots or so, um, if I recall correctly. But this is across from Flipper, Highway twenty-five, between Johnson's Crossroads and Highway thirty-one W. And so, uh, with these six lots, we just finally said, hey, you know, we really want you to have a, a private road that, um, from which you can access these, uh, these lots back here. So they agreed, so there's a, um, a driveway that makes a circle there on Highway twenty-five. Uh, and we'll agree to the name Running Creek Private Court. Uh, I will say that a lot of the other cities are, are allowing us to use private roads, some of which I just learned this from Galton, a flat agreement with Bellixio. I think that if there are more than two or three homes that are on one private or a driveway essentially, then they require a private road designation. And any private road within Galton has to have P B T as part of that road name, just to differentiate. And so everybody knows, you know, the, the public citizens, you know, anybody that's a private road who maintains property and not by the city, void of the county, or in that case the city, sorry. So another issue that we've seen is the, the quality, the size of the easements that access these lots. Um, some of these structures, the, the access to those may be hindered by the quality of those roads, sharp turns, steep grades and so forth. And it's really, it, it could potentially cause a problem for fire apparatus and ambulance, you know, not so much a police car, it would be smaller, but just imagine a large fire truck trying to navigate some of these, these private drives. I'm going to show you a couple of those pictures here in just a second, that, that's sort of pretty much my point. Another thing that we want to consider is the structural integrity of a bridge. And I'll back up and say one thing, this, this is not just for a single home on a single driveway. You know, we're talking about a piece of property that's been cut up or several people will end up building potentially. And so, you know, that's, that goes a little bit beyond just a single private home that has to take whatever their, whatever the situation that they're, whatever circumstances they come up with. Now we're talking about somebody selling these lots and, you know, one of us could buy those. And we probably want to make sure that emergency services can get to us in the event that we need them. So anyway, um, bridge capacity is, is another thing that I would recommend that you consider. We recently had a gentleman down along Hala Pike who called us just out of the blue and said, "Hey, I live in blah, 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 along Hala Pike. Just wanted you to know that I've since upgraded my foreages. Make sure that it's in the, in the same standards as whatever, whatever the regulations and if a, you know, twenty ton fire truck crosses it, you know, that fire truck's not going to fall in the creek." So and I was like, wow, that's, I never really thought about that. That makes perfect sense. So here are a couple of pictures that, uh, from these developments that, uh, I've just recently told you about. This is Key Town Farm. So, you know, these pictures really don't do it justice. You, you look at that and it just looks like a crowded drive. Same thing here, but you get up there, and this is sort of a steep grade. Uh, you can't quite see it, but you, you go down a little, uh, or bend it pretty much and move on around some of the backside of the property there. In a Ford Explorer, not too bad. Again, we're talking about ambulances and fire trucks to get back there and they cause a little bit of an issue for you. Uh, fifteen hundred block Garrison Branch Road, picture on the left, no big deal. I really like that they, they marked that, uh, that their driveway is, you know, go to the left there. Now, look at that same, look at the same driveway on the right. Now, that's almost a hundred and eighty degree turn right there. Now, on a Ford Explorer, I mean, they're probably permitted to make that turn at, but you consider a large fire truck, that's a problem for that fire truck to make that turn or ending up the scale. Another picture that, uh, that didn't add to this PowerPoint is you get right up there and the, the driveway makes about a ninety degree turn to the right. You look to the left, uh, you can, you can see there's pretty good roofing right there that should fall into. But there's almost no way, I can almost guarantee you that a large fire truck is not going to make that ninety degree turn up there. There's eighteen forty-three Garrison Branch, almost an identical situation, almost a hundred and eighty degree turn right there. Good thing here is they've concrete that driveway, so it's not going to be as, you know, difficult to, to navigate up through there. But still, a fire truck or an ambulance even making that turn right there is going to be very difficult. Running Creek Private Court, uh, one I told you about a minute ago. The picture on the left is the easternmost entrance off of Highway twenty-five. It's narrow, but no big deal. A tail, you make that turn right there and these trees are going to make it very difficult for an ambulance and much less a fire truck to make that turn. Picture on the right is the west side of that, uh, of that development where the six lots are back up there. Uh, this is very steep grade. Um, both times that, uh, that went up there had locked in a little drive to make it up this, uh, this gravel driveway. Not necessarily because I guess this, the, the, uh, the grade itself, but just because of the material of the road, it's just loose gravel through there. Now, I could probably go and run a stock or run through their two wheel drive, but you know, I don't want, I don't want to tear up these folks' driveway either. But my point is think about the future, about a, an ambulance or fire truck trying to get up there in emergency to somebody's medical call, to a, a structure fire. It's just going to be very difficult for that to happen. So, um, I've, I've come to you for, for a, a twofold request here that you would please consider. One, you're handling anything more than three homes on a single access point on a public road that would be required to have a private road designation. Let the developer or whoever come to us like they normally would, submit requests for specific names. We'll vet those names and then we will approve or deny those and send them back and say, hey, give me some more, use more options. But the main thing is to, to have that, that private road designation with a name around the road there. The second thing is to, to consider requirements for the structure and the integrity of the, and the, uh, the overall condition of the road and taking into consideration first responders getting to the homes that are accessed by these, these driveways and these private roads. So just a couple of things to think about from a public safety perspective and our perspective as well. Any questions?
The address numbers, I thought that was always done by the post, the post service, no?
That's true. Um, we work with the post office and we try to, well, we go by their standards as well. Well, there's no, there's no confirmed standard anywhere that says you have to address something in a specific way. Statute gives us that, that authority, again, once it's designated by the, the entities, the, the government entities within our district. Uh, but the post office really doesn't have any, any say over the addressing at all.
Uh, they, they will, numbers of, they're, 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 but the, uh, a lot that we confuse, they think, you know, Galton or Hendersonville, right? White House or, or Hendersonville or whatever. So like the city, the people will get confused about the city and that they think that means something and that, that they're, they're, they get their mail delivered to whatever in Galton, right? And they think that has something to do with their zoning or jurisdiction or whatever. My understanding on that is all that is, and that's where your mail happens to go, to the post office. That's, 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 that's the place where it goes after delivery is to Galton Post Office, to get Galton's address or Hendersonville or whatever, I think. And so, so there's, there's a lot, a lot of times the, the unitist power is listed on your, your address. People think that that has something to do with something that we did or that he does. And it doesn't at all. The, the, the post office, I believe, is just kind of where your mail happens to get delivered from. That's where you're going to enter your, it's going to be your address, you know, this part of the, the city, whether.
I think that's so strange. I, I noticed in California, you, you had to go to the post office to get an address. And, you know, even the Brown Mill, which is all five acre lots at one point in time. Uh, you have all of the, the heating numbers are on the west side. The pot numbers are on the, what, east side. I just assumed that the post office had something to do with that, but that's not the way it works here.
You have to set up your mail. The developer or whoever built the building will have to set up like their mail service. And Richard, I think, speaks to that probably more, uh, more, more closely than I can, but. But you have to establish your mail service at the developer. You're going to build a subdivision, a batch of physical addresses in terms of house numbers, um, are, are signed by, by the email post.
Really?
And of course, that maybe you can get, you can go to the post office to set up your mail. Nowadays, they enter into a whole other conversation that, that they didn't used to as far as the, uh, the centralized mail delivery kiosks and that kind of thing. They require those now that home for, for subdivision by the lots and that kind of thing. They won't let you have any of the mailboxes anymore, right? But as far as what numbers are on that, those mailboxes, that's not assigned by that.
So this one development, all these five plus acre lots, it was the same number, A, B, C, D, E. They just did that on their own?
That was a, yeah, that's where it runs into some difficulty there is that, and, 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 you know, most people were still going to get it wrong. But if I've already got a five ninety-three and I've got a five ninety-seven and somebody comes in in the middle, well, that should be five ninety-five, right? But they built ten houses back there. And so how do we address it? And so, so I think it just would like to start by this, you know, let's say it's five ninety-three, five ninety-five, five ninety-seven, Highway twenty-five, right? What would be optimal for them is instead of A, B, C, D, E, F, G, five ninety-five, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, have a big Smith private lane, one oh one, one oh two, one oh three Smith private lane, right? And that, that, because that, that would ultimately get a lot of confusion then.
But when it comes to five acres or more, we don't even necessarily know.
That's right. That's, and that's always been the difficulty is, is how do we, how do we get hooks up to it? You know, as far as, uh, with, with by this subdivision, with the subdivision, unless the five acres by state law, when you create those lots, they have to have a planning permission to read. At that point being that they're mandated by the staff reviews it. We, we ensure that the addresses are on the line, uh, or the planning permission for major, you know, three lots or above. Um, what we have to make is with state law, our subdivision regulations to get a hold of those basically. And like, you know, the roads have to be built to a certain standard or everything has to be done a certain way. But when they're over five acres, it, it's a lot more loose goosey and we don't, we don't know. We, Wild West, that's right, we don't know that they've done it. We don't know that the farms make that up unless somebody like Richard. Then Richard doesn't do many of these kinds of things. These are, there's a lot of other surveyors that do it. Um, but unless the surveyor happens to call us and just mention it to us, hey, this, this, this farm's going to auction this weekend or whatever, I think, we don't know about it until they come and get it going. So after they've already sold the lots, in other words.
One more thing, while, while we're talking about this, something that was done, I don't know if it's done now, but it was done when I started, we didn't want to build. Um, so we have our main road and it starts at one thousand and then one thousand one. And then we have cul-de-sac, they'll start with a T. So the cul-de-sac starts at one thousand, well, it ended in two thousand, the next cul-de-sac, three thousand and four thousand. Like they all start, so we, everybody gets their own snail, everybody gets their own snail. I've had an ambulance over the corner, supposed to speak, cul-de-sac to Corning. So that could be something else maybe to track that in, uh, if we're talking about this, to make sure that if there's a subdivision, like a main drive's one hundred or one thousand or whatever, and a second one's two thousand, three thousand, so you don't have one thousand one and over and over and over the same thing.
We do try to avoid that. If we do a large subdivision and we try not to duplicate those, those, uh, numbers there, um, we'll try to do one of them, three of them, you know, or, you know, twenty-one or twenty-two or something like that, just to avoid.
I mean, it's twenty-two, it's packages, it's snails, it's emergencies, it's, you know, it's everything. And I had somebody have their party at my house, but, um, but it is interesting because they're all Ts. Every road is a T. There's something to think about.
That's, that's, there's a whole lot of stuff that used to happen like that, 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 and I'm not bragging on what the street through is done over there. When I, when I started, the first couple of years that I was here, thirty-nine one office had a little bit of limitation at the addressing side of it, not a lot of everything else with the addressing side. It was, it was kind of, there's a phrase that, that was fly, used to fly west. It was, it was not, it was not very well organized and not very well, uh, and Mike is transformed it. I mean, I think you could ask any surveyor, and so I totally have a little while back at the high spray, like number of brush rings, same thing positive by anybody before. Yeah, the only positive thing to say about Mike is definitely.
So what would be the mechanism or instrument for us to even give advice? I mean, I, you know, these people, uh, who are doing these, these cut-ups, for lack of a better term, probably would do if, if it was advice to them, but we don't even know about it. They, they don't even think, like, let's say, they don't know what they don't know. And all of a sudden they've pulled off a bunch and they don't, they've got this easement for, you know, it's not a private road, it's just an easement, that's grounded in, is, I mean.
About the only time that we, right now, with the, you know, the way that we could, the way that we do things now, I think about the only time that we could possibly catch it is when they cut that road in. They need to have an administrative permit at that time. And the trouble is that, I say people lie to us, but people won't, they won't permit it. I'm like, especially after these kinds of things where they know what their rights are anyway. They won't give us the full story. And so, um, we'll see them cut the driveway like that and call them in to get a land service permit and then just say, oh, it's just a driveway, it's just a driveway, or whatever. But they're discovering that such a significant amount of, of herb there that, that, something like that does require a land service permit for sure. And so we can get our, we can get our proverbial hooks installed at that point. And when they, when they pull that land service permit, to make sure that they reach out to, to the D nine one one office. The other way would be to, to kind of stretch it a little further, try to figure out some way, some mechanism for that to have to, those roads to be planted, which would require some pretty significant regulatory checks.
Yeah. If, if you break a piece of property into five plus acres, do you have to go surveyor to, to cut it up? Okay, when that surveyor moves or comes into a county to do that work, does he have to get a business license?
Um, I don't know if he'd come into the county and I don't know that he would, I'm not sure that he has a state license or worse. Um, I mean, if you're a, you know, uh, and, you know, what they do also, what in general do is they'll report a boundary survey. And so I'm, I'm hesitant to necessarily pull trigger on having, trying to figure out a way to make these guys, make these property owners plant these roads. Because the, the act of the planning commission approving them and all that, that gets us into a whole relationship with these roads that I don't have to get out of, you know, when, when they get, when they, when somebody doesn't maintain it properly and washes away or, or whatever, we'll, we'll never get free to, with a public, with a developed building, a road that's going to be public, what's accepted by the county. If my office is done with it, it's totally your responsibility at that one. It's the road's different than this guy. Um, but on these, nobody ever accepts it and they stay private forever. Um, and everybody, everybody ground is really saying issues. And one, one of the things that some of the county businesses, up in, up in East Justin Kingsport, Crystal area, there's a lady, uh, that's the planter there, Angie, uh, that's not her, that's Washington County, I keep that in mind, but anyway. They have a, a, a memorandum of understanding with Register D's office that, uh, Register D won't, won't, won't report a boundary survey unless the planning office stamps it as compliant with their zoning requirements. Uh, it's on the edge, it probably wasn't legal, uh, but I think it's, it's favorable. They've been doing it for twenty-plus years there. Uh, it doesn't necessarily require a lot of additional work. It doesn't go to the planning commission or anything like that. But that boundary survey shows all these boundary plots and how they're really set up and it shows the access route to, it'll show that service route in general, it almost follows that. Because all these people are going to share, have the right to use that driveway.
Yeah.
And so it might be that something like that where we, you know, where we work something out with Register D's where they don't report any boundary survey, um, without us confirming that each lot has a particular road front and so it has to, and that D nine one ones, and you, we could even have D nine one sign those things or whatever, or stamp that they've, they've ever viewed and addressed. I think that, that, that could be the.
Well, you know, if, if the people just knew what was at risk here in life.
Right.
I think they would, you know, even if it did take a fifty foot wide easement for that private road, I don't condescend to me that they would, you don't want to sell somebody a lot where you know that they're so well hidden that somebody could die in case of emergency. And that, that's not necessarily an old wish, that's somebody, you know, cutting with a chainsaw cuts his arm. And, you know, I mean, it would seem like Register D's would be a good place to do it. I don't know where else in the county.
Some people may not want to be there.
Well, that's true.
I mean, there's, there's people that, uh, west government or parents that, and it's all about people living there.
Till they need that.
So it's kind of a devilish, is it more regulations that the town fits on or do you?
Yeah.
I get it, I think I totally do. I would want somebody to have access to me. But I'm also, you know, when I sell a house, I'm like, hey, you know, you got to think about, if you buy this property and it's got a driveway like this, you know, you got to think about. And maybe those are, maybe not everybody's like that. But there are people, you know, natural ones that don't have good access and that you have to realize. And they may want to pay this or they may want to make it water or, you know what I mean? Like, none of us, like, cares.
Chris, is that part of disclosure as a real estate agent?
No, it's just me, you, me, you know.
Yeah, that, that, there's nothing, there's nothing, there's no standard, there's no, I don't know if there's any liability for anybody with the way these are done. Um, I'm not a lawyer, so I don't really, but the.
We've done a couple.
Right. But, but the, uh, one more I was going to make, what we're seeing in Highland County is that these, what's being done on, with these developments is, you know, these aren't going to be there to serve necessarily, you know, trailer houses that are, you know, uh.
He said three, he said three hundred.
Yeah, these are, these are, these, these roads are being cut in, it's our million dollar homes. You know, these are, it's kind of, it's interesting kind of the, the thing where the, the homes are super nice and families and kids and all that stuff are all up there. But, but the roads that are accessed them are, are, you know, it's really, they're not, not very good shape. But, you know, again, that, that's all.
Yeah, because that may have been a foreign trail on the right where they had a tractor, pull its plow or something. Or one of them.
But we, it's, it's something that impacts us at the, at the county level, the staff level too. We had, if you go back, we'll go back, one of these here, the Key Town Road one. It's that one. Um, one of those spots was on the board zoning appeals agenda this month. It ended up getting the permit for a different reason, that they were needing the permit for the P C A or something. And we went out there twice and they never got it. We just, we couldn't find it. Um, and, and so it, 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 there's, there's no markers, there's no, the, the gravel road's just kind of lined off this way, they've lined off that way, there's nothing to tell you which house is which way or anything else. And so for, just from the, from the county side, definitely what I do with the inspections on these things and all that stuff, it's hard to find, um, and that's a broad daylight. And so I keep, I just have to get back there and try to find it in ambulance and do a block in normal, like the rain or something like that.
Well, I, I agree, Chris, that probably there are people who don't want to be found. But people with a million dollar house probably want to be found, especially if there was a fire or an emergency.
And that was part of my point, and you all just reiterated that, again, the, these lots aren't cut up just usually for, for a family building, you know, there are kids and houses back there. Um, the last picture, fifteen hundred, the fifteen hundred block Garrison Branch, uh, you go all the way to the top and they're, that is a family factory, built two houses and they are nice houses. Uh, they're, they're probably not a million dollar range. Uh, I'm sure they will celebrate the price of construction just for inhabiting that trail up there that's taken all the materials up there. But those are super nice houses back there and they're very nice people. And I, I was seeing those as people who, you know, don't want to be found. But, uh, uh, that is what I've seen, you know, it's, it's pretty nice homes back there.
Well, Chris, if we did look into it with the Register D's, is there any violation of privacy?
Yeah, I don't mean.
Yes, please.
The Register D's operates under a very specific statute. I do not think you can replace a requirement on top of, of this stuff. That's why you have the planning and development. If you've got to do some of that, have them go for as far as any of that goes, I think we need to start there because the R D is very specific. I, I equate it with a clerk's office at a court. Uh, their job is to follow, I expect their job is to make sure it's correct. Their job is to make sure you comply with everything. Otherwise the R D's taking on certain liabilities for the, uh, root of, uh, reclamation that was never intended to be there. So I would really encourage you to look for another video other than trying to develop this R D.
Do you think of it, Eric?
Planning and commissioning and recording, like, it's not a story. I mean, I could put, put more work on that side of it, but some of this stuff that's going to be built is going to be built. There's none you can do about it, no matter what you put in play. But, you know, these, all I can say is you cannot place a requirement on R D.
Yep. The way they did it still, the county is not a requirement, like anybody is required of anything. Look, wait, and I've got the place in, it may be somebody else somewhere, but back in the nineties, they worked out an agreement between the planning office and the register's office. Because what was happened was the surveyors, no disrespect to the surveyors, but the, the surveyor reported on these lots that didn't meet the zoning requirements. And so they, they kind of didn't get the permits, the appearances, didn't have the road front that they're supposed to have, all those other issues. And so the Register D's and the planning office worked out some kind of an inner office agreement essentially that before the register would report it, they wanted the planning commission or the planning director of that office, the planning office to put eyes on it, put a stamp on it, that zoning requirement.
I still think that is going to be a problem. However, after you say that, you can make that system work in reverse for wherever the filing will be come or before. And then somebody could follow up on the files and then initiate whatever, and then maybe go on with that property. What, they may even outlay in what they filed, what their intentions are. They would need to be a follow-up, they could then, after the reservation, possibly.
So who does the file in the register? So who does the filing of registered deeds?
Property owner will take it, actually, although boundary surveys, if everything's over five acres, as example, planning commission review.
Right.
And so it was the way we looked at it, um, and they take across all my office, the registered deeds and the court. Now, they check all the time, and there's very many a time that they check a deed that's altering a plat or something like that. State law requires planning commission approval for anything that's a meaning plat, that's all they can do about it here. And so they, they, they give them back over to our office then.
Because you're at the rate of the deviation from recording plat and just building, that's different.
But on these, on these boundary surveys, they're five acres or more, they, they accept them, like, report them, and you're buying. There's just no, there's no, no opportunity for you to execute or look like.
Unless you might go run from there.
Well, I don't know, this is all in the city, so. I mean, it's certainly worth pursuing, I'm not sure, is that something that you should talk to Holly about?
We can, I can talk to her, yeah, I'll, I'll pull the documentation from the, the folks on, so we can, send it, I'll send it to the law office, let them look at it and see if it's a law, we can follow up. And I, and, you know, I've never talked about it with the register, I've had it for years, I've just never wrote it. Um, I've never pitched it, so I'm sure they wouldn't necessarily have a problem with it, as long as they didn't feel like there was something, like Eric was saying, in the statute. If there's something in the statute that, because sometimes with the register's office, they don't have a choice. And people, people get mad at the register, office, because they reported something or another they shouldn't have, or whatever. At least it's my understanding, they're, they're basically compelled to report the document, right? And so I don't know whether, what, that, that's, and that, that's where it goes, when it goes on like this, is can they kick that boundary survey back? Without, you know, if, if we agreed, I need to sign it, because the statute doesn't say that I have to sign it. Right, so, so are, are they bound to report that document or not?
Yeah, I, I would see this strictly as a voluntary thing, that, you know, if somebody doesn't want to be found, they'd just say, no, I don't want to, I don't want to deal with this. But on the other hand, if.
But, but as far as being found, that's not an issue, that's, that's, I mean, that's a philosophical issue, but they have to have an address. I mean, there's, there's, that's not, that's not negotiable, to get the building permit, you have to have the address.
Okay.
And, and to build a house, you have to have the building permit. And so they're, they're, that's not a negotiable point, and they will not be found after that, litigate or whatever, then that's not, you know, that's on them. But as far as, you know, being off the grid, not having an address, the middle of the house and all that, with Wenzhou, you can't do that, that's, that's, that'll be checked.
So, so a situation like that where that's just really an ingress, ingress easement. It, it's recorded, but it doesn't have to be fifty feet wide.
Right, yes, so, so what, what our requirements are is that each lot that's created in Southern County, less than five acres, has to have at least fifty feet of physical road frontage.
Oh, okay.
Every lot over five acres either has to have fifty feet of physical road frontage or a fifty-foot easement that they don't share with anybody else. And so essentially what that is a lot times, it's called a paper easement, we call it, right? So those lots there, they have a physical road frontage or an easement that guarantees them access to a public road. But in practice, they utilize this private driveway, and we look at it as a private driveway, but not a road, that'd be regularly necessary.
So they all share that private road, which has the fifty-foot road?
Yeah, it, it, well, whatever it might have, yeah, but each one of the lots that you see there has a fifty-foot easement or a fifty-foot shared property going up to the road.
Right.
And so each one of them meets the letter of our requirements, and the reason that they started doing that was back in like nineteen eighty, uh, there were structural reasons, number one. These things tend to break down over time, the roads get taken care of, they sue each other, and they won't, the county will take it over as a public road. That, that used to happen all the time, the county used to do that a lot. And what used to happen was these tracks have been landlocked, and, uh, and, and there, there had no other way to get to the road. So the county started making them, making every lot be required to have a fifty-foot road frontage or a fifty-foot easement that they don't share with anybody else. So each and every lot that gets created, and it's a surveyor's responsibility to ensure that it's built, that's part of their statement. Um, each lot that they create by survey has to meet that requirement, a big bill, and they exempt it from the planning commission's review, it's their responsibility to do it. And that road, the private road that they actually use in practice, like I said, we look at that as a private driveway, it's not our responsibility. We don't approve it, we don't maintain it, we don't negotiate between them, but if somebody decides to litigate across it, we've had the craziest stuff happen. That's not funny, we had a guy park a tractor across the road one time, we had a guy litigate across and start charging the toll for his neighbors. Uh, but we just tell them, that's, hey, that's a simple matter, and, and, and that, that kind of works for, for the county. But from that perspective, because it keeps us out of the, their location. Um, but, but practically, in terms of being able to find them and being able to access it, it really doesn't work very well a lot of times across the county.
Okay. Well, can I, to throw another thing?
Oh, you can clarify that. Yeah, we've worked with, uh, we've worked with Dean, with him on these projects, uh, the last, the last one especially, and with the private court, didn't have a problem with doing that. And I think, I know what Josh is, is talking about, about the land disturbance, uh, permit. I think that's a good way to catch it, because I think most anybody, the first one in there to get a building permit, he's going to say, okay, I had to get in here, where's your driveway? You go to the county, get driveway permit, and that should catch it, but we didn't have a problem with doing it. We worked together good over the years, and we didn't have a problem going to get the private roads and names, and we got them several names, and we went through the process. And, and I guess some of this, that road triggered this conversation. We tried, we tried to do some of this stuff, and we got, we get both addresses for much of everything we do, if it's a farm or if it's a lot, you know. Because people don't know how to do it, or, you know, whatever, so we would have sent them a sketch of what we're doing, and you go through that. But I think that, uh, that driveway or land disturbance permit, but a lot of people are, and, of course, I worked with these people, they're building these roads. As a farmer, to start with, and then they're coming back and checking this farm, it's just a big plant. But, uh, I think Josh is right, I think still that first building permit would catch that if they've done something wrong with it. And I think even off the road too, and I think the weight, capacity of those bridges. If it's crossing a blue line, it's tricky, you've got to have A-R-A-P permit, and you've got to come through the process, whether it's a road or in the rock, am I wrong about that?
The, now, this gets offensively, the, the, the A-R-A-P, so the crossing has to have, it's called the aquatic resource operation permit, or A-R-A-P. Um, now, but that said, I don't know that there's anything as far as the design and standard on that bridge. It just has to be done, it has to be done in a way that T-D-A approved, so that it, it doesn't disturb the buffer, or it doesn't, you know, mess up the, the creek itself to that extent. And so I, I don't know, as far as like structural load, you know, all those kinds of questions that we would have. Build a public bridge, call it a public road, it's got to be built in a certain T-D-A standard in, in general. All of these kind of things, we don't necessarily have any, I, I don't think we do anyway, a standard that they have to be built to. Um, now, we, that said, we might, as part of issue that, that land disturbance permit, we might require, well, I think we haven't passed, uh, uh, something of an, of an engineer design on a lot of these bridges, but sometimes they're, they've been there a long time. But what you're saying, a, a whole lot of time, these things will have been there for many years, before they decided to sell a farm and then divide it up. And they're using that driveway with that, that bridge, that's probably a temporary bridge, that becomes the permanent bridge. And T-D-A decided that it's been there for twenty years or whatever, thirty years, they're not going to make you get a permit on something like that, that's been there for that long.
So the A-R-A-P probably won't let you throw in a forty-inch corrugated metal pipe.
It might, it might, you just have to, it has to be done in a certain way, and it has to be designed, and you have to show that it's not going to, you know, with the calculation, show that it's not going to wash away or whatever, you know. Um, but we see, we see just many different, like, it's, you know, it was, we had somebody go to a, a hot tub barrel, and you cover, you know, all these. This is a log dam, and this, he stops over, and then washes away, and then we had a little guy, the thing, that had taken a tractor-trailer. And, uh, and put it across, a forty-eight foot tractor-trailer, with the wheel still on, and that's the bridge you drive the bridge across. And so it's, it's all over that, what we see. And other times, it's a, it's a concrete bridge, it's, it's engineered, built to a standard. If they come through to get the permits, and we go out there, and they ask how to build the bridge and all that, that, that's when the marshal will catch it, and then it'll be, it'll have to be done in a certain way at that point. But if it's already there, people are driving across it, we don't necessarily have a standard to say, this isn't good enough, you got to take this out, if this other doesn't.
Well, clearly, this is happening today, that these, these, uh, well, subdivisions that there's not necessarily have to be planted, it's a problem. So if you can, you know, shed some land on it, and, 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 they, 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 they do it.
I appreciate it, the, the, the registered deeds thing can talk to the law office, see where the medical room, it may not be, may not be something we want to do here. Land disturbance permit will be left in play, and the one behind that, like I said, they try to figure out a way, uh, to, to require, or some of these, or all these, to be planted in some way. And have some kind of a road plat down on them, which is a whole other conversation.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
You've got fifteen minutes that you want to try and do?
I, I did.
Yes.
And Josh can give us a little bit of interview about, like, just like your sit back or framing reservations and to add anything we need.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
About that.
Glad to run up, that was where I was going with it, time ran out. This is the Williamson County family, I said the Williamson family drops the, the sand again.
Yes. So, uh, I share with you, as, as you know, the legislative being forward and back, uh, zoning changes that have been heard about this body, um, the last month. Uh, led to lot size increases and that kind of thing. Um, we, we had heard a good bit, uh, we got a lot of few calls and questions and that kind of thing, like, it's a, uh, flexibility, I guess is the word, you know, looking at, are there ways to accommodate, uh, families? It might be, it might all the properties that want to develop, not necessarily develop, but transfer to kids and grandkids and those kinds of things. Um, and so we had talked about that some, my initial take on it was probably that it was going to be difficult to do that, and of course, I still have some questions about enforceability. Um, but, uh, I did remember sending something at one point in the Williamson County regulations, where they, as you guys know, they went through a larger lot size across the, their, uh, yeah, well, across their, the part of their county that's outside the U-D-A, so similar to what our company calls for. Um, where within their U-D-A's is one unit for one acre, outside of that, it's a five acre density is required, a five acre, one unit for five acre density. With the, with the cluster, and that kind of thing. But they do have a carve-out, um, that they call family subdivisions. And so you'll see here, section two oh six, family subdivisions, this is in their subdivision regulations. Um, what that does in the subdivision regulations is to just make reference to their zoning code, uh, language. Um, where Article eleven of their zoning, they call it the ordinance, that's a resolution, um, where what it does is, uh, talks about a family subdivision affidavit that restricts your covenant, uh, within the times terms, family subdivision and immediate family, um, as well. This references those, so that's what the subdivision regulations, and that's all the subrare say about it. Basically what that's saying is there's specific types of subdivisions for families, um, and, uh, you have to meet the other, other requirements of the subdivision regulations, basically, after that. And so when you go to the Williamson County's, uh, their zoning code, their table of allowing uses. Let me check that one first. Um, they have residential use classification, and their eight districts, it's kind of, we have some similar, it's like a fifteen acre, uh, voluntary subdivision. Uh, it's not really, I don't have a station that, because it doesn't really, they don't have much of it individually. Um, but they do have more of the RP five, RD five. Um, and so what that is, is, uh, in their age, which I think is their handling, is your, um, the RP five is, is their, uh, rural preservation, five, some five acre lot size subdivision, and RD is, uh, residential development. Uh, and I asked the guy that used to fit their community development, what's the difference between those two districts? There's not really any, um, basically it's just a five acre, but a lot size. They just decided to call it something on one half of the county and something else on the other half of the county. But that being said, um, it does allow family subdivisions, you see it's permitted by, there's a writ, uh, within those other districts. So what does that mean? Uh, so what, what Williamson County does is they allow the establishment of family subdivisions, and it talks about, remember up here. As prescribed in Article eleven of the zoning ordinance, so the tracker is at. It says, it says in page eleven forty-two, so that's Article eleven, is what it's referring to. So what it says is, family subdivisions shall comply with the following standards, uh, total lot size shall be one acre, total lot width shall be one hundred and thirty feet. And establish a set back thirty, front inside thirty, rear. Uh, states that lots must take access to a public road or from an easement, they treat easements a little different than we do in Williamson County, I think, but especially in this family subdivision context. Um, they allow, uh, shared easements and that kind of thing, uh, for these family subdivisions. So that's like a common thing over something up that side of the farm, where you partition off a number of one acre lots. Um, and they have restrictions here, uh, the number of family subdivision lots that may be created are based upon the size of the parcel to be divided. Uh, so, uh, what that's saying is how big is the property, right? Uh, so if you've got five acres, or seven acres, or eight acres, um, they allow you to part, partition off the one, one acre lot, um, for, and for family. If you have ten or fifteen acres, two, um, two lots. Fifteen is twenty-five, three lots, twenty-five, four, twenty-five to fifty is four lots. And then if you have all the fifty acres, you're able to do five lots, uh, five, five family lots.
And so that I understand, this is where the, the cluster concept comes in, they can make those five one acre lots?
Now, now, clustering is something totally different, so what that is, is if I've got fifty acres and I want to pursue a cluster subdivision, I can do ten five acre lots, and I can just concentrate it. As long as my overall lot size, and, but, but that requires the, the rest of the property has to be, that it is open space and that kind of thing. You won't see any of that, whether, you know, that may most of the, the property is common space under ownership of HOA and that context. But this is kind of separate from this, this is basically a carve-out they have for families where they're able to just, because by virtue of the fact that it is for an immediate family member, you're able to, uh, de-dig from the five acre minimum lot size that they have.
But, so, I guess I'm misunderstanding, the fifty acres and greater, so say it was a fifty acre parcel, they can only carve out five ten acre lots?
Five one acre lots.
Five one acre lots out of that fifty.
That's right.
Okay.
That's right, five one acre lots, so, so that's what, so if you've got five acres, then you can, you can divide off one, one acre lot, right?
Yeah.
If I've got two hundred and fifty acres though, uh, then, uh, five, is what it says, five, five one acre lots.
So, the, um, I have, not having read all of this, is there any description of who a family member is and who isn't?
So later in my presentation here, we can, so, uh, so, uh, what it says then, so, so that's how many you do. Both the owner creating the parcel for immediate family member and the immediate family member receiving the property shall sign an affidavit on a form generated by the county, certain time. Subdivision meets the criteria to this section, and so what that's saying is you have to essentially find, sign an affidavit, or almost like a contract, I guess, with the county. like a contract, I guess, with the county and the planning commission that you're aware of. Um, and then it goes on to say, uh, the owner of any lot created the, the family subdivision shall place a restricted covenant on the property prohibited transfers of non-immediate family member or period of fifteen years following the subdivision, unless such a lot is so they put a voluntary transfer, which is for, for voters that judicial sale, non commercial, or whatever. So basically this can't take precedent over and they will proceed. I thought it restricts the property, it will link the family for at least fifteen years.
And is there a definition for a year? There is?
Yes. So here, the, the family subdivision is, term is, is defined, uh, the division of a lot parcel for the purpose of sale where it is a member of the immediate family with the property owner, or the lot is, be created does not meet the minimum size requirement of subdivision. So in other words, if you're going to tell family member and the lot is less than the first standard minimum lot size that they have for that district. And then immediate family is defined as each person who is a child by birth or by law, stepchild, spouse, sibling, grandchild, grandparent, parents, or stepparent. So it's not cases that you cousins, it's, it's various to be defined with what you would think of the common sense of immediate family. And that's it, that's all they have in their, in their code related to that process. Um, now what I, what I need to do, if you guys are interested in pursuing that, we have to draft it up, get into the zoning code, um, the implementation side of it is what I'm most interested in and how well it actually works in Williamson County, they've been doing this for a hundred years now. The guy I've worked with for years in Williamson County just retired, and so I've gotta get to know their, uh, the guy that's taking this place a little bit better, but, um, I may see him tomorrow, actually, I mean, but I'll, I'll be reaching out to them and, uh, talking about, uh, if they did this, I know they still do it, and so how does it work? What are the pitfalls? Um, is it, is it practical? Um, is it something that they, that much interest in in the community and that kind of thing? Maybe I'll get a copy of some examples of some plans that they've done, um, and some of these affidavits that they've reported and that kind of thing, I appreciate it, guys.
So what would be next steps for us?
Well, we gotta get drafted, um, you guys have to look at it, and I might come back and say that and talk to Williamson County, and they say it's the worst thing they ever did, and it doesn't work, and it's, 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 if you want to say, I honestly know that one, and they might, that, you know, I might come back and say they, they strongly recommended they do not do this because it's, it's, it's called, they have a higher technical staff members just to handle it, right? I don't think that's the case, but it may be, um, but I'll come back and report to you guys, and I'll send you guys that kind of thing, just as far as what I found out for some examples. Um, and, uh, but we'll have to, if y'all want to proceed, we'll have to draft it up and the zoning code, get it advertised, if there's like a lot we have to, I'll have to get, you guys have something to add that in. And, and, and then, way you get with the zoning regulation, regular order changes, when I add something here, it, it messes something up down line a little bit as far as, so I have to do all the checks along that whenever I get back in, and I have to probably get to pass that somewhere else. So that's, that's, uh, that's the most, is the part of changing your regulations is paying in, third of them, you have, basically, probably with the, the, the five, six, and I'm here.
Okay. Well, I, I personally need to study it, I don't think yet, but I think the will of, at least what I've heard, the will be as big on this, I, I, that the other option is, uh, the zone change, I suppose, yeah, because you, you can do a one acre lot, you can use zone change, you can use, you can use.
But, yeah, there's, there's that, and, you know, there might be an option to, to allow, uh, you know, if you, you wanted to do some kind of special section or something like that where, and, you know, provide the net certain requirements, you could reduce lot sizes to the per square foot or something like that, uh, if you would have a voluntary, that would be, then you'd have a voluntary normal lot size reduction. Or maybe it might be something the planning commission can give power to, um, there's lots of places to get it at.
What I'm hearing in the public is, is because we started talking about this, it's five acres or bust, and it's not that way at all, the way it is, you have written the zoning code that we're talking about, so. Any questions? No?
I'd be interested to see anybody else that's had more than fifteen years.
Yeah.
Kind of the way that was, you're like a twenty-five or thirty year, it might sound a little bit intense, but fifteen years isn't really that long.
And, and I think it's just, it's just, uh, the, the, he did from, you know, and, yeah, yeah, because that's, that's, that's a good practicality if you, in, in reality, if you said you gotta transfer to a property to a, to an immediate family member, um, and you didn't have any kind of say, or what would happen is that, like, I was, I, I got thinking about, oh, I would transfer that lot in her name and then she would sell it to, to somebody else, you know, and, and so that, they, they got something, all that is, they robot, you know, then, then.
This, uh, should we just get started for?
About two minutes?
Two minutes?
Okay.
That's what I was gonna ask.
We thank everybody for coming, we're gonna go ahead and start the meeting right now. It is, uh, the nineteenth of March, twenty twenty-four, this is the Southern County Planning Commission, Regional Planning Commission, and, uh, we are starting it right now. Uh, I would entertain approval for February twenty twenty-four meeting minutes.
I did have one, one, um, uh, just a wire, I'm gonna have to, see, it's filling in with his job, by the way, he's, uh, he's second grade, he's just in the planning office, and we, we appreciate all of our, you know, society, and he noted that there was, uh, there was a little, little typographic issue with, uh, I think seventeen of the minutes, um, we haven't elected Mr. This is, uh, positive vote on there. And so the minutes that you guys have on the table, I have never advised, show the correct vote total, um, and with that, we didn't have any other chance to advance this campaign.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so that's the minutes, okay. So, uh, uh, we have a motion to approve, we have a second, a second from, from Holmes, uh, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay, approval of, uh, the March twenty twenty-four agenda, uh, we have any change?
Yes, sir. Two, two very fine points. Uh, the first one was on the, the ten item number two, uh, only the ten that went into the back, the ten that came before you is correct, um, the ten item number two, uh, the current ownership of the property was shown as, uh, our, our residential activity management development. And then I think we had a mapping issue on item number five, the correct county commissioner for that piece of property is the twelfth commission of the district, um, Chris Holmes, um, and those are the only changes we've had, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, okay. So with that, uh, I have an entertained motion to approve?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right. Public comments for items on the agenda, uh, requiring a public hearing, uh, just if, uh, if you have a general comment, we are going to suspend the rules, uh, but we did through item number, uh, four, the Liberty Group campus, we have several speakers that want to speak to this issue, so, uh, item one has been heard. So we have items two and items three, uh, I'll tell you what, why don't we go ahead and, if you're in item two, three, or five, let's speak, uh, now in public comments, is that okay?
Uh, well, I, I, I would, you would have to have a say along with public comments.
Oh, that's right, you did.
But I don't know if we have anybody signed up to speak.
Well, then, then let me retract that, let's, let's just, if you, as, uh, Patrick Josh does his, uh, presentation of each item, we will have public comments on that item afterward, that way we don't have to get confused with it. So with that understood, and full or shorts, Josh?
Sir. And so there was, uh, we accepted the referral request for item number one, just got by that one there. Um, so for item number two, uh, second part of the shores, B U D amendment number one, uh, the, the planning commissioner, this one, Mr. Chairman, uh, this is a five one four nine acre piece of property, uh, that's requesting to amend and approve concept plan, uh, for adding two additional buildings and, and a, a cemetery area on, on the, the plan, um, that they're adding in a, uh, they're adding in a, a good bit of non-residential square footage of what was shown on the original perpul, and so that makes it some major amendment which has to go to county commission, uh, for approval. Uh, the joint property owners are notified by certified, they owe this advertise, this item was advertised in the Galt City National State Department on March the seventh. As I said, that this original B U D was approved sometime middle of last year, I believe, the sixth of, in the summer, and I didn't, the, the perpul later, maybe later on in the presentation, uh, but this is an amendment of that to add a couple of buildings. And the reason it has to come to the, uh, to the planning commission is, uh, we have certain grounds that constitute a, a major amendment, a minor amendment, just moving buildings around, something like that, very small tweaks, um, sat there, who does it administratively, um, certain things, they'll have to go back through the whole process, they're moving and all, and adding square footage, so the perpul B U D is the one, so if you say we're gonna get a total of ten thousand square feet of, of area under roof as part of the hood, um, if you come back and wanna do fifteen thousand, then that perpul, that's the best correction after that, because that wasn't a little perpul. And so that's, that's the case with this one. So this is an area of, they're lying to turn off, uh, I tell everybody to take, take the, the geography data that we have, we're gonna solve it, we all buy a lot, sometimes a little, which is all by several feet here on this particular area. Uh, so a little background on it, uh, they revealed itself back in, uh, November, uh, the rezoning notification imposed, decided it was a replacement of road frontage, uh, the joint property owners for six certified letters related to this public hearing, and it's advertised in the Galt City National Center, um, was the.
Uh, the joint property owners are notified by certified, they owe this advertised, this item was advertised in the Galt City National State Department on March the seventh. As I said, this, this original P U D was approved sometime middle of last year, I believe, in the six months, in the summer. Uh, they, they put the approval later, maybe later on in the presentation. Uh, but this is an amendment of that to add a couple of buildings. And the reason it has to come to the, uh, to the planning commission is, uh, we have certain grounds that constitute a, a major amendment, a minor amendment, just moving buildings around, something like that, very small tweaks. Um, Scotty, uh, who does administrative, um, certain things, they'll have to go back through the whole process, they're moving and all. And adding square footage to commercial P U B is one. So if you say we're gonna get a total of ten thousand square feet of, of area under roof, park and hood. Um, if you come back and wanna do fifteen thousand, then that of course will be approved. That's the best correction after that, because that wasn't a little proof. And so that's, that's the case for this one. So this is an area of photo. They'd like to turn off. Uh, I tell everybody to take, take the, the geography data that we have. We're gonna solve it. We all buy a lot, sometimes a little, which is all by several feet here on this particular area. Uh, so a little background on it. Uh, they were removing itself back in November. Uh, the rezoning notification imposed decided it was a replacement of a road frontage. Uh, the joint property owners for six certified letters related to this public hearing have been advertised in the Galt City National Center. Um, was the February ninth, it was March the seventh. Um, this is the, 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 back on March seventh. This is the invitation to the, uh, to the meeting, December twentieth, is when it's actually held. And this is the summary. Uh, I think we have one neighbor that came. I was in attendance at this one, which is the neighbor of it was out at the great lit offices. We had a gentleman that, uh, that owns a commercial zone property that adjoins this. He just came, uh, to see what was going on with it. Uh, probably biggest topic of discussion was the pet cemetery. And then so, uh, they, they, we got some calls about that. And one of the things that we requested was that that pet cemetery area, they clearly showed on the, uh, on the plan, which wasn't the case the first time we came through. But that has to be taken care of with this, with this, so that. So this is the, uh, this was, this is a picture from that neighbor of it. This is, that's such a property, as I mentioned, there's a good bit of, a good bit of commercial zones, commercial P U D is approved, uh, here's one. Um, you have other main storage and commercial zone property. There's a big cemetery that adjoins this, uh, as well, commercial cemetery. So this is the approved concept plan, and I'll talk between the two, so you can see the amendment. So you can see that what they got approved with the first P U D was the addition of this new building, which was a, a, a standalone, many, many, many store warehouse building. Uh, vehicles stored, empty cars and that kind of thing. And what they're, what they're asking to do with this is they add twenty dollars of this particular building right here, and then they add the new building right here. Um, again, you can see the, uh, the pet cemetery area is indicated here. And then, uh, yeah, yeah, right here, yeah, right here too. Um, they've added conceptual grayed areas and that kind of stuff. That, that is still just kind of to be worked out when they get to the site plans, saying, quickly on this first building. But site plans will be done in thirty years or less as well. Better view of it. Um, they did turn in a photo metro body plan. There's light in this, both as part of the sub building that's approved in the first P U D. I don't think they add their, request that any light or anything to these, to these structures. This is, this is more like a storage shed essentially for, I think, borrowers and stuff. That's the way I said, but to me, and this back here is additional, uh, R V boat kind of parking back here. Um, they've turned into vice architectural plans as well. Uh, referred to the, I would refer to them to the twenty, what all these are. Uh, my conference plans support this. Uh, this is located at the highway, uh, highway services, um, period period in the conference plan. Uh, again, they have turned into conceptual grayed plan with the, with the bud showing how, how it can grow it in with the, uh, the detention facilities and that kind of thing. Um, when they turn in the site plans, we'll need a good bit more detail with, with that, that spell. Uh, but this P U D is approved, or amendment is approved. And then, uh, uh, also the site plan saying they're, they're for the relocation today. Um, the planning commission might want a little bit more comprehensive drainage improvements to paving within the site and that kind of thing as well at that time. Uh, as far as roads, this, you see it's a number twenty road, but this, there's no access allowed on the highway one on that. Their access is on to a Scotty Parker road, which is a little highway one, and a major arterial roadway. Um, this roadway is adequate to accommodate this, this use. Another thing that'll be discussed when they come back to the site plans, pave the driveway, get rid of these signs. Replace them with, with signs that conform to our current standards. That point in took some creative pictures of the, and a random picture of dot com, I guess here, just to kind of show what it looks like, kind of coming into the site. And this is the pet cemetery area. I was there today. Everything appears to be in good order. There was something, some brokers, some folks had been told that they had to move those up to the pet cemetery areas. And as far as I can tell, that ha- that hasn't happened, unless there's some area that maybe used to be a pet cemetery. Um, but as far as I'm at, it's all in good order. There's another, another area, another few of it. This is the, I think they went ahead and cleared off that building, that aside, but this is where that storage building is gonna go, right here. And again, the other building special will be back here, back. So this other mountain, the standards, uh, this, this applies to my conference plan. Uh, there's no infrastructure issues that are noted with this. There will be some site improvements that they'll need to make, uh, but the, the services, roadway and everything, there's a fire hydrant right out, right outside the, uh, the exit to this, just a little to the north of this, so that the hydrant is pretty close by as well. And we don't necessarily intend, intend to make any negative impacts of the site rings down, go back toward highway one on that, and, uh, gets carried away at that point. And so we don't want to let this make any, any negative impact. There will be, there'll be landscaping and that kind of thing. It's gonna be installed in every construction of this, so. So next steps, uh, this major meeting, uh, we'll go to the legislative committee for two readings, and then the full county commission for both. Uh, and if the county commission approves it, uh, they will get effective at that time, and then they can, uh, they, if they're willing, when they're ready to go to construction, then they can turn in a site plan or site plans to the planning commission. Um, this is, uh, this is left over from a previous approval. Uh, these buildings are large enough that I don't think they'll be administrated or approved. These will have to go to the planning commission. Certainly for the big, bigger new building. Uh, one of the small storage shed maybe could, could be, uh, a break administrate with it. Um, be, be preferable to do a site plan for the overall site, just do it all at once. But I don't know if that's what their plan. Um, so, Mr. Chairman, there's, you have the motions on the screen. Uh, number one, we need to provide a positive recommendation on this item. Uh, the conditions that they need to turn in a site plan and get some compliance certificates prior to anybody doing anything to improve the site. Um, opportunity to provide a negative recommendation and for it to be deferred in order to work on its support and get additional fresh in the back there. And this is a, this is a public hearing. I didn't have anybody that was signed up to speak to this item.
Okay, good. Just to confirm, nobody wants, is here to speak on, on this item? Okay, uh, Josh, can you take it back to the projected site plan? I'm, I'm gonna ask a couple of questions. That, um, uh, what's the one with the, that one there? Okay, so those, that shrubbery, those trees are, um, planned to be in it. Any particular reason why he's not got one on the southern border?
I think because it's, uh, it's already a commercial zone. Okay, so we have, we require the buffering between, uh, when you look commercial against a residential zone piece of property, then we require certain type of buffer. Depending on what you're doing, maybe a bigger buffer. Uh, but this one, which required is a, a type two landscape buffer. Um, but when you go to commercial to commercial, we don't require buffer between those.
Cause that's a residence in front of the, and it is a residence on the south side, two or?
Uh, I don't remember now. No, it's, uh,
Is it just the area?
Yeah, it's, I, I don't recall what that is off the top of my head for this order of property, but it's, it's on the partial services, is what it's on.
Okay, all right. How many square feet is, is he buying here in the?
Twenty-two. And so there's an eight thousand per foot addition that's proposed, a forty-two hundred square foot. This is forty-two hundred square feet. That's eight thousand. So anything three thousand square feet or less, that convert administrative site class. So both of these would be too big for that. They would, they'd have to come back to the line versus per site plan.
Okay, so he's, he's adding twelve thousand two hundred to whatever he's got there already, which is substantial. Is, is the site gonna be paved? How does that work?
Um, typically, when you, you know, when you, uh, improve the site, well, you know, you could go to Galt or a number of other jurisdictions. Um, they're gonna have you breaking the site in compliance with their current regulations. And so in general, that's gonna be paved and signed, landscaping and all those things. And so I would anticipate that we want to see additional improvements to the whole of the paving. And like that, or I have to ask the planning commission to not do that, because it's asking a lot of them to, to show that up for site plan.
And that, of course, will trigger that, okay.
That's right, that's right. Yeah, but they, they have, uh, they have, uh, they have detention shown here, um, that, that I believe is intended to capture a lot of this from water runoff back here. And this is all conceptual, um, that, that this, the, the detention areas can change. Again, like I said, if they need to ship buildings over for, for drainage purposes, they, they, they can do that.
Yeah, the question here is the amendment.
That's right, that's right.
All right, uh, any questions?
I have a question.
You have a question?
I know. I remember, um, this video on the news about those.
Can you talk to me more?
We're just being on the news about the pet cemetery. We go through a word about it not being there, saying that's not true.
Is, is?
Are these buildings going on top of quarter that place?
As far as I can tell, no. That's not, there, there's, and I would have to defer to the property owner in the back there. Um, the, as far as I know, the pet cemetery is sort of more toward the front part of the property, and it's been kept in their natural state. Um, when we discuss that, neighbor of it being, um, the gentleman who owns the property mentioned they get that, that way, that was all the news, and they didn't able to show her where her animal was buried. And so if y'all want to talk to them about that, I have to defer to them on, on the specifics on that.
Okay, I pretty worked that, uh,
Sure.
Things like that, and I don't want your, pretty deserving of a good building on top of quarter animal, where it used to be, and, um, that, that, I don't agree. So can we get that question answered?
Sure, we need to suspend the rules.
It's, it's, uh, property owner has the right, so, you know, that, that's, that's all by later, by also that.
All right, can we bring him right now?
Yeah, a question, Josh, please.
Um, same, there's nine addresses in the records, we'll pick ten minutes.
Sixteen eighteen, Scotty Parker Road. Michael Martin.
I think the question, Mr. Parker, was, uh, have any of the s- uh, cemetery plots been moved, or is there any truth to that news? So everybody?
Everything they said, the news, four, five, all clocks.
Okay, okay.
So these buildings are not gonna be able on top of quarter of the pet cemetery, is it all?
No, one of the, the, just the roof buildings is the backside of property. And, uh, the one building is where two existing buildings were.
Oh, okay, so you're tearing one down, or something with every apartment? Or it's already one now? Um, I have another question, hang on, I'll, I'll, I'll also, um, I guess that's it, thanks.
Thank you very much. All right, well, so we have three.
Time to leave them, though.
Go ahead.
Cause they can also go to the use for auto storage, or go again?
So, uh, like, is it, is it, this, this right here?
What was the question, fifty, fifty?
Are these also gonna be used for auto, those storage, baby storage? Is that also?
Yeah, they're a large unit, so it's, it'll be open R V.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we have three example motions. Uh, do we have a motion from anybody?
Okay, motion for number one with, uh, maybe.
Okay, we got a motion, we have a second. Motion is. Uh, any questions with the motion? All in favor? And if they can say no, I have amendments. Sorry, I, we're gonna do that. Okay, item number three, Josh. To deserve an amendment, yes.
Yes, sir. Uh, this is a, uh, a public residential subdivision. Um, as the, the planning permission, you guys quite remember, uh, up until a few months ago, we had a set in our process called the sketch flat. Uh, that caused, that required a, a formal approval from the planning permission prior to building on, sort of, on our class studies. Um, we were really an outlier in a lot of ways on the having the sketch flat, at least here locally. Um, Andersonville and other river stations have gone with what we do now, which is, uh, for the set, where you present a concept as for input and, and, uh, and discussion if only. Um, just to get feedback from the planning commission. I want the planning commission to think about the project, um, and any recommendations the planning commission might have. And so there's no vote on this one. This is just gonna run through the, the specifics. Our bunch of volunteers here, uh, with, with his minds, uh, there's a bunch of volunteers to start by your way around this one. And, uh, the planning commission has questions following this way, our first one of these. So if you have questions, if you have concerns, it's, it's just a poll to discuss those. And so this is, uh, this, this piece of property is located along Allen Road. It's a determiner, it's about the road. Uh, the property is a rural residential, uh, which is designed across a forty thousand square foot, but on lot size. Uh, that's it, the proposed lots, um, range, uh, there's nothing smaller than I can quantify, four, one, two, nine acres for building lots, and range of twenty-six acres. Uh, there's forty-one lots total that are proposed for this piece of property. Uh, they're looking to utilize the rural estate cross section to extend Allen Road, essentially, up into the property, following the path of an existing asphalt driveway. Uh, that would have to be improved to the county standard. Um, what that allows them to do is to be able to extend that road, um, and, and minimize their infrastructure costs. Uh, the county essentially gets a good road, so we don't have the same issues that we were talking about there in the study session. We get a public road that's, that's, uh, safe for everybody to use, that the, uh, the purpose of vehicles can be utilized, where the goal is secondhand, that everybody can turn around. Um, but they might put in curbs or sidewalks and those kinds of things. So it's a, it's a trade-off in both durations, and everybody, that's all. It's kind of, I don't know, okay. So utilities, provided by White House Utility District, I believe C E M C is, is the electric provider here. As far as, sure, what they're proposing at this time, and I've heard and discussed it, whether it's a step system, um, they may have reevaluated that and chosen to look at a, a conventional setting system. But I believe they're looking at a step system, um, that will be owned and operated by Aninus, with Tennessee Water, is the utility that will own and operate that, that Water Utility. Uh, that will be responsible to the state. Um, so this is for our subdivision regulations, about the site conceptual lot layouts. Again, what, what it says is, this is for recommendations, not recommendations, um, for the planning commission to discuss with the developer, uh, before they even spend all of that money early on, uh, on designing a plan and having construction plans thrown. It's required, like, the preliminary class study, just to say for you, if, you know, if you bring in here, you know, either a quality resource, the terminations or whatever, whether the terminations in here, uh, construction plans, road, drainage, and all that, they turn into preliminary. And so this is just to make sure they're not doing something that the planning commission is totally, totally got other ideas, um, for what might work better, uh, of what they've always been on that line. So this is the subject property. Uh, but maybe relatively, this, this property was sold in one time by Mr. Bill the Road, uh, technically rest. So, and, uh, there's a, as I said, I was, I don't know if they, they looked at it, uh, this Allen Road, city road, the real is a little, or somewhere back here. It terminates, uh, they have a road that terminates in here, and it turns into a private driveway, or a, a asphalt driveway. That's in relatively good condition. Uh, and it just follows the, the hopper here, if you will, uh, back to the house. And it does, there's a creek, just a small creek that, that parallels that road. It's kind of down below you. Basically drives along this road bit, um, that is in the floodplain area, it's under your floodplain. Doesn't sink across the road here on this property, uh, but it's kind of parallels it. And so this is, uh, this conceptual lot layout's been drawn by Mr. Ballinger. If we need to argue, then I'll open up the packet, and we can have a look at this, and we'll zoom. If we need to update it, I'll open up the packet, and we can have a look at this, and we'll zoom in on it. In general, the, uh, the road, as I said, that Allen Road terminates down here, that's the challenge that this lot has, is it doesn't have a lot of road footage. And so it doesn't really have the ability to provide all the fifty-foot of road footage that we talked about. There's a park, which is one of these lots, unless it builds a public road up in there. And so that's what the proposal do, is to extend the public road here, and extend the public water lane through here as well, or, and, and presumably, um, we have to get feedback from White House Utilities. But presumably, there will be a highters, that will be installed as well, uh, but the Florida has loaded it there yet, and there's this highters. Uh, but we asked to, to get highters put on the line if anything can be accommodated. Uh, but again, the expenses have been shown around here, I think there's a good area, safety soils area. They, I notice they had a stake off, and they sit down, the house is kind of on the hill, and there's a flat area down below it. Um, that's where the steps system is going to go, by the way, right here. They, they provided some documentation from the, from Aeneas and the City Water, agreed to provide that service, uh, for this, for this property too, that was in the packet. Uh, this is just from the, the data table from the, from the plan, uh, where they're talking about the lot dimensions. And they're showing how many, they can plot a lot of rural state for the cross-section, requirements, minimum lot sizes, lot dimensions, setbacks, etc. So this is in our map, and this is the suburb place site, again, it's right outside, I think it was considered, it's. Back off the one unit, four, one acres, so this is considerably less dense than what will be on our, as I mean. But if you driven it, you'll, you'll see why, it's, it's, it's not really an issue to, uh, really dense, same thing we developed with.
True.
Very, very, yeah, and I, I don't know if I mentioned at the beginning, but I'm looking at it, they've, uh, they've got a, and a custom homes, which are going to be the, the building on this. Um, that, uh, from the way they described it, it's going to be a pretty upscale, upscale project, um, and, um. The property included is sort of the, the lot, and the structure also involved on this. Uh, this is a rural state cross-section, when you look at that, it will be, I want to, basically, it's just a safety foot by, uh, road bend, which is about what you have there now. Not able to go higher than what you have now on Allen Road, it's a good go higher than the driveway this there. Um, no curb or sidewalks, again, preserves that rural feel, locations on both sides, just preserves that rural feel as you can just drive up into the property. And so again, for brothers to extend Allen Road, a twenty-plus lot, uh, develop a terminate and cul-de-sac. Again, so they heard to see folks, a few dozen, whoever else can, can turn around at the end of this, of this driveway. Um, and, you know, the, basically, you know, our, our lengthy discussion we had there in the study session, for the statute, we don't make recommendations necessarily on, on the elements that come through, but, um. We always look at something like this, and one of the biggest reasons that the planning commission put the rural state cross-section in the regulations at all was to offer this as an option. But then these, you know, these kind of cheap, you know, street farm, uh, sort of, they take a farm, divide it up with gravel road that, uh, people can't. Again, you heard all their study section, you can't find the houses, and you can't get up the hills, and the gravel washes away, and all those things. This is, this is preferable in every way, um, from a public safety perspective, aesthetic perspective, um, it's, uh, it's, it's preferable, preferable to do it that way. Uh, they'll have to acquire any legal state permits, such as a bridge, A-RA, or anything else, um. Uh, I think this is from another presentation, but there is one, there is one cover crossing that we did know, I believe, as we were driving across, that, that's actually an A-RA. Uh, for that, I think they crossed a creek, five hundred feet or three. Uh, so that, that's not necessarily an issue, that's a work for T D on, on any, uh, A-RA that they might need to obtain. And, uh, construction plans, construction plans, or whatever they, uh, uh, sped for the preliminary plan. Um, per our regulations, they have several highters would be necessary for this subdivision if White House Utilities can provide the, uh, long-term fire department, uh, for service area. Uh, this would be on, on site, a step system. I think the water, uh, they'll have to make special arrangements to White House Utilities, their water availability later, talking about elevation changes for the houses, they probably bumps and that kind of thing. You get the water at the hill toward the houses, they're going to be, and that has to work out with the, with utility. Uh, so next step, this is preliminary final plan approval, and again, preliminary class study, that's something we get all the data in here, document. This is not a voting item, this is just being presented to the planning commission for input, which about one year, so if you have any questions about the development, if you have comments, positive or negative, you know, that's what this is for.
Sure, uh, can you come up, please? Questions or critique statements, anybody? Where's your door?
My question would be, I know that they want to make the road, extend Allen Road and make that a public road, and, um. I mean, I, I get the concept that the county only wants us to make it over once it's done, so, um. I know that there was a subdivision kind of not far from that area, and the neighborhood just, they made their own road and made it wide enough, you know, two cars, and it's nice. And then the, I think there's, um, twelve or fifteen houses, and they kind of took their responsibility of making that themselves, I don't know the angle, but. I, I, I just, maybe, maybe Josh just, you know, not necessarily the view, but like, what? I know it's heavily over there, and then I get, I mean, we want to have access and all that, but that's another road that the county will be taking on, so, is that?
Well, relatively, this is a private road, we're probably going to resign it to a thing, and, um, basically, um, and, and, and do that. But we're not having any provisions for the planning commission to appear in private road. Um, and, you know, if, you know, not to go out too far, but, I mean, the, you know, the maintenance of this, you're talking about the development of the village, to a county standard that is pretty high. And I hope to retire sometime in the twenty forties, and they're probably not going to have to pay you a bill with, I mean, you know what I'm saying, and so it's not, it's, it's.
It's, it's, like, the, the pros and cons of what occurs, is that?
Yeah, that, like I said, from our perspective, and yes, there, you're not, you're not wrong, but there absolutely is a maintenance requirement on that, that's what the county here for them. And so, uh, the, the, the public safety, the, the perpetual maintenance guarantee that have in the county is going to make sure this road is maintained properly and perpetuity. Uh, and it's going to remain a, a, a good county road into the future, to serve its future residents. Like I said, you can tell how, how, I think it's, it's a low rate of cost, and that, when you look at it over time, there's costs certainly, but, but that's what the county exists for, is providing those kinds of services for the buildings. And the safety, the safety aspect today just, but I'm not, I'm not an elected official, so I don't get voted on anything like that, but, but from a, from a, a, a public interest, uh, public, uh. You know, protecting the public and that kind of thing, and, and it's, it's, it's worthwhile, because the expense of installing that, getting that right on the front end is the developers, and I think the county will make sure that they do. So if the county's having to build it, I'll be there for it.
And also, where the road is, where the route is now, if you look at, you know, it's conceptual plan, I turned in, it goes up to the bottom, uh, if you look at the topography. All the yellow and this stuff is twenty percent of the greater, uh, you see the white up through there, it's really generally rolling and flat up through there. It's a really beautiful drive up to driveway, it's, it's a nice farm, uh, as you come into the farm there, Mr. Monroe's little log cabin is still on site, and we want to preserve that.
That was nice question.
Yeah, we want to preserve that roommate, ask all maybe last system, but it's a little smaller than, uh, a five acre trap or whatever, because, uh, we, we want to keep that, obviously, for historic purposes. But we may cut the size of that track down if it's possible. But everything you see in the white there is really nice and flat, uh, as you go up the driveway. And I think it does, we have a lot of, with some pretty nice homes in there.
Is that house on the store registry?
I don't think it is, and we were going to look into that, you know, because, you know, what we needed to find out what we needed to do about it.
And just one more, it's just a comment, I know that, that, um, hey, I guess sometimes I'm a little, a lovely house, and I have them more of scale, so that's, that's good to see, thank you.
Again, a quick question, I noticed that the smallest lot mentioned is four point two nine, is that in conflict? Or is that in the rural growth period?
No, it's, uh, the, 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 what our, uh, complaint calls for is, you know, the vision is kind of one acre lot, but, but being less dense than that is certainly no problem at all. Being more dense than that maybe, um, but my, but being less dense than that is, is fine. I guess again, this, if you, if you try to do one unit or one acre on a site like this, you know, the amount of, uh, the amount of site work and, and ecological devastation that you probably have would be, would be significant. You'd have to take the tops of these hills off, you'd have to do a whole lot of the work, and so it would certainly be preferable, and just by every way, to try to preserve and utilize that topography in, in a way that, that.
Thank you. So, uh, so there, there's a log cabin and a house on it right now?
There, there is a house on the log cabin over in that district.
Okay.
Uh, the house, there's still discussion about, uh, maybe leaving it and making a clubhouse out of that, the club house which here, if, if, uh, there's talk about doing that and making a clubhouse. And like I said, as far as the log cabin goes, it's a, it's a smaller dwelling, we're going to try to get that preserved and, and get part of the development.
That would be really cool, because, you know, Elmer Rose is an icon, and, and you're using, to keep the house on the log cabin would be fantastic. Uh, I love the project, I, I think it's great, uh, it's what a lot of people in the county are pushing for, is that they can save lots and, and, you know, beautiful houses in the moment, and it's all well done.
And just to clarify the locations, I noticed the, uh, the, the, I don't know, tell me if I'm wrong here, but the, the road cabin is down here.
Yes, sir.
And then the house itself is, is up here, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it's more of a modern house, apparently, they don't talk like you said, the best clubhouse up there.
There's, there's talk about getting into a clubhouse, uh, still, you know, we're hoping for suggestions, we're, we're still behind the preliminary stages of, of development. You know, and these law lines may change a little bit, try to pick up some better building sites, that kind of stuff, and, uh, you know, we've been working on trying to find the best layout for each home.
Josh, who, you may not know this, but who, who is service to switch fire department?
I don't know that, I don't know, I don't have that whole thing.
Is that a, is that a, is that a, is that a, is that a?
Yeah, I can check on it, but you're.
Yeah, I can check on it, I don't think it is, or my idea is.
It's A-ES, okay.
All right, so there's no vote to take, there are no more comments, we can move on to, uh, I need a board.
Thank you.
Thank you. Here, so Josh will do the presentation, and then we'll.
He's trying to become, I don't want to expand rules like, like, what state, uh, don't care. Mr. Jones, the question will refer to this one from our last one. This is a delivery grade campus final plan. Um, this is a tip school in County Alonzo, a very civilian, very adjacent, of approximately seven thousand thirty layer feet of a public driveway running through the school campus. Um, this, this property is located between, uh, Upper Station Camp Creek Road and Hunter Lane. It is owned institutionally, uh, which is a zone that we have for governmental buildings and that kind of thing, governmental properties. Um, property that contains two hundred sixty-eight and some changes. Um, this property is owned by the Southern County School Board and Southern County Government. The property project is presented by C S D G. Uh, uh, Stormwater Management Committee has dedicated provided for all additional water infrastructure on site and the, the maintenance of the storm infrastructure is the responsibility for the, is responsible for the school this year. Um, campus campus stormwater management, they do state law and having facilities annually, or the, the, the campus in this school are permanent today. So the county, the county government does have a, a role playing that, uh, here. The section was actually out today doing, kind of good house evening where we, uh, we have to inspect all the school facilities across all counties here. Um, for stormwater laws. Um, this final plan was approved, this year, this final plan was approved by the planning commission on July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two. Um, it was not recorded in one year and it's sound fired, uh, per the campus subdivision regulations. So the site was simple, it's approved for one month by the planning commission in order for that to address issues noted, led to log lines of the location of a future public park on the property and plant signatures. Um, uh, and reviewing, it looks like these items have been addressed for this year's stuff. So the purpose of this subdivision plan is represented as two-fold. Uh, first is to plant new, new utilities in order to formalize them. Um, supply us utilities as provided for the letter that's in the, it's in the packet. Uh, what, what that letter says is provide these, these systems while allowing that I have utilities to, to begin providing sewer services to school campus. Uh, apparently utilizing that pumping hall method, uh, at this time. And number two, it's, uh, public service is completely required instead for the future dedication of a new urban road. Uh, will pack weight as a public county maintaining thoroughfare. And so state law is, it makes provisions that roads must be planted prior to eventually being accepted by the county. Uh, with a note that will accrue a plan that's not constitute for what the road, the road, that's going to continue on process after it's planted. Uh, when the plan does, it's just mobilized where it's at, not moving that causes problems. The next item, the agenda will show up, not planting something that causes issues. Um, so planting it shows where it is in space, uh, basically, and, and, and provides description, just base amounts of where the driveway is. Uh, once, once the plan is done and recorded, then it goes on to the highway committee and to the county commission actually being accepted. County commission owns the roads. So that's, that's kind of how I find it, everybody's planning, commission lands the roads and, uh, and produce their location of the plan. The county commission owns them and the highway department maintains separation of powers, right? Their, kind of, use everybody, their, their, their responsibility center. So this is just the first step of that road acceptance process. And so they're anticipating completion, uh, once the, the middle school is wrapped up and done. Um, then, uh, they, they, they will, uh, are around that time. They're expecting them to go in and fix up any road dangers that have, have shown themselves. You'll have that overtime settling and that kind of thing. And then they'll put down the, uh, the top coat, that's all, um, sometime in the middle of this year for that, for sure. This is their review, uh, you see that this other property is, um, was purchased, um, and sold to the county in two tracts, um, and that are shown here. What this subdivision plan does is does a number of things that I said, but it combines these lots essentially and then resubmitizes as, uh, where the road comes down through here, it makes a lot too, especially being a lot one. Um, another thing that it does is this is a life estate parcel that was owned by Mr. Brown while he was alive. Um, the recording of the subdivision plan formally removes that line to make it go away. And there were some easements as well that came down here on the Hunter Lane now. So I think legally, uh, no longer, but it may have gone away with, with his death, uh, but they would, would, would report in the plan as a different way. Uh, so this is the subdivision plan. Uh, this is a particularly large piece of property, uh, and so to, or to break it all down and shut it all, had to be done across five or six sheets. Um, so we have, looking where things, uh, this is sheet one, we're looking at sheet two, uh, sheet three down here, sheet four, five, six. Sheet two. Um, this is that, uh, Brown house, it's right here. And one of the things that the, there's questions about the park location and where it was. Uh, and so the, the boundaries of the park, um, has a place to, a grant that was obtained through the Tennessee Department of Park and Conservation. Um, the boundaries of the park are reported in an instrument with a registered deeds. Um, it's a exclusion, is what it's called, uh, uh, basically, uh, it establishes the boundary of the park for the purposes of that grant. Show where money's going to be spent. And so, uh, this hash line right here, the, the, the house itself is not part of that grant, so that's why that's shown. This is just reflected, that's, this isn't a coverage, this, this shown on the park, basically. Um, and so the house itself is excluded from that. Um, sheet three, you see, this is where, uh, where the new road, old back way ties into Hunter's Lane. Sheet four is where it continues on its way here, east to west. Uh, sheet five, you continue to see, uh, the road, foot, you know, taken and that kind of thing up here, or the rest of the school. And then sheet six is the aisle itself here and the road coming back out onto Upper Station Camp Creek Road. Uh, one of the things we, like, again, the comments that came up in the meeting were, uh, you know, what happened with the boundary location of the old life estate, um, that, uh, that was, uh, that was all by Mr. Brown, that went away and that's reflected on this plan, uh, not this sheet, but on, on sheet. There's a plot line to be removed, uh, the boundary of the park is shown as a, there's the exclusion area. Box is small, I'll be glad to pull this up on a, on a, on a packet, we can sit down on it. Uh, that, that, that exclusion area is, is, is noted on, on the, on the plan. And then three, I think the other thing was, um, there were signature blocks that made up all, all the pages. I guess it's where, we got to do a part each page, but by design to make sure by all parties, to make sure that, uh, everybody is taking care of their, their, their respective responsibility. And so those, those signature blocks, again, this is boring stuff, but it, it, it's very important. Uh, she has to be signed by the, uh, one office, uh, the owners have to sign it, so the school board and the, uh, the county mayor has to sign it. Approval for reporting as made on behalf of the planning commission, as the planning commission secretary. Bobby Rose is the highway superintendent and/or the, the, the county engineer. Um, they need to get signed that, that, uh, that, that they're on. Uh, sewer systems, the water systems, supply us utilities, so that's on, that's on both blocks there. And the certificate of accuracy is the surveyor record. Uh, Wilson is the surveyor record on this, this plan. And then there's people up here, a plate drainage and engineering. So one signature block is, um, accuracy of engineering for major subdivisions. So this subdivision is by, so it, uh, it certainly has to have accuracy of engineering, um, signature block signed by the engineer record, Mr. Harrison. And then there's another block right here that's, if you add, add a successful drainage. And so that's a block assigned by the engineer record as well, um, certifying, um, that, uh, the storm drainage is accurate for the site as it's designed. This is that water utilities correspondence, um, where they, they basically tell us that, uh, their utilities must say they either be planted or reported by eight thousand pounds. They need prescription by, for much cleaner way of handling it, um, that they, they do, that they treat them anyway. Um, the road status correspondence from C S D G, uh, this one, as I mentioned earlier, they, 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 the road will be completed sometime. Um, they're pending for, they're just not in mid-April, they usually take a little longer than, than you think. And so, then, then twenty twenty-four, so they're... Um, this is state law that I was talking about. Um, what it says, the county or court board officer thereof shall accept, play out, open, approve or create or pay for lighting any road unless it has been accepted, opened, received, illegal status of public road. Um, or unless, uh, prior to the planning commission existing or unless the road corresponds in this location and lands with the road shown on the subdivision plan. And so we did road plans to find a new local road, um, this process that kind of had a, had a, uh, improvised here to county, I think, for years, it was not quite done that way, but the, the law does, does really encourage county to have these subdivision plans, give these roads planted. Comes along with you if, if public roads don't get planted, so by all, everything is. This is just the second text again. Um, as I mentioned in the law, we're going to T C A thirteen-three-four oh five, it's clear that the approval by the county planning commission of a road on, on a subdivision plan doesn't, doesn't accept the road. Um, we've actually had that come up as a legal matter in the past where you can have subdivision that's, that's pretty well built out. Um, school bus gets into it, it's, uh, it could be a circle or something like that. Um, and the development, the, the, the road, the road had been accepted by the county though. Uh, so there's lawsuits and that kind of thing. We're going to report to this state law, it's fair to say our road's a developer road until it's signed as, as the county commission accepts that road. So how that, or how that interacts with a school road like this, uh, like, it's, that's way outside of, of, of knowledge, but, but if approved, this plan doesn't, doesn't, uh, doesn't constitute an acceptance of the, that's what I'm looking for. Uh, our bylaws, um, we have time as a fact for flats. Um, is it, is it, is it consistent with the comp plan? Uh, is it consistent with the intended purpose of zoning? Um, does it not contribute to the purposes of preserving, maybe that political requirements? Um, will it not create adverse effects on the property owners? And will the, the property owner, small group of property owners benefit to the benefit of the public? Um, don't see any, any reason to say that any of these aren't met, with the exception of the comprehensive plan item. A comprehensive plan that not envision necessarily a school dislocation. Uh, and so, so it's, it's silent on, on how the school would, uh, relate to the area. And then all the reasons we didn't need that, that are comp plan. So next steps, um, once this plan is approved, uh, the plan can be signed by all those parties I was talking about. Everybody has to sign a page, that can be recorded once I sign it. Uh, by law, I have to be the last to sign. Uh, the recording of the plan will formalize the dimensions of that future public driveway and all utility and drainage adjustments. Uh, but again, as, as was noted by White House recording of these easements will allow by national utilities to be integrated by public stewardors of the campus. Um, once that, for that final plan is recorded, then they can go. Once, once it's done, um, the, 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 the plan's recorded and the road's completed, uh, with the final top coat, uh, they can be placed on a road, be a agenda, um, and, and accepted by the county commission after that. And so, Mr. Jones, there's a motion on the train to approve this plan with the conditions that I've noted. One, all the signatures must be obtained, um, proceed to the highway committee, county commission for, 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 for acceptance. Uh, two, to deny the final plan, and three, to defer. And we've done our next report.
Okay, uh, we have people that want to do, do any, suspend the rules?
I would probably recommend. The recommends suspending the rules. We have a motion to suspend the rules. I, Commissioner Holmes, second. I, 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 Commissioner is, uh, on favor of those. See now, it's, yeah, it's, I'm going to take that again. Okay, why don't you go ahead and start with the list and then we'll see if anybody else is there, deciding to speak.
The, the person starting to speak is Mr. Anthony Jones, out of the, the, or the, the, or the, but Mr. Jones will sign up first.
Okay.
I ask for help from Randy to hook up.
Give you, give us your name and address.
My name is Anthony Jones. I've been a resident in this county for sixty years. I have lived where I live now at four twenty-nine Upper Station Camp Creek Road, Galton. I own the property thirty-nine years. That's all I own now. Well, we're going to ask, I'm going to let him get hooked up.
I have this one. I'm not sure why we're falling into this. Just want to say that first, Josh.
I want to thank you for allowing me to talk.
I'm sure you're welcome. You're not connected, just want to try to do this, but we got to do this moment.
Hopefully you can see the pictures.
Thank you.
I live south of, my farm is what you're seeing. What you're seeing is my farm is south and I board the school on two sides. There's a fence between me and the schools. The arrow that you see pointing there is my home, my parents and my daughter and son-in-law and their family. As you can see right there, where it's pointing to my pond. Also, you're seeing the retention pond from the school that flows into my pond. You're also looking at two lines in the middle of those pictures. The one to the left, the short arrow, has got a trickle in it now. Where before, the water flow coming on that, on to that groundwater creek was pretty good. The one to the right on the long arrow is dead. It's been cut off completely on the school side, where before it was there, now it's not. And there's no water coming in it. That's the water that feeds to my, to my creeks and to my cattle. What you're seeing in that picture, uh, where the arrow is pointing, is in my field, next to my daughter's house, uh, joining the school property. Those trees that you see up in the right-hand corner are on the property line. That water where the arrow is pointing is coming from the school's retention pond into my pond. This is a video of my pond. This has happened multiple times, more times than I can count. I'm at the point where I'm, I don't want to do it. The flow comes into the bottom of my pond to the road. It's about two feet in my daughter's ditch in her driveway where that car just passed, right there. Then it goes under the road, across the street. That's the overflow coming out of the retention pond from the school. That is a fence between the, and that outlet back there. I'm that close. Where you see that water bubbing out? That's within less than ten feet of my property line, of my fence. That is pretty much a standard, every time it rains and we have a heavy rain, is what you're seeing right there. It's so devastating, I can't talk. What you're seeing there is my neighbor across the street, Jeff Stevens. The water from my farm goes under the road and flows his front yard. That's the neighbor to the south of him, Mark Gregory. That's his front yard. All of that is coming from the retention pond. That you see there is where Mark was built a new home and the water is still coming. This is the new home being constructed. He has raised the, the elevation on his house and his dirt around his house over three feet to shed the water away from that. And he still has a pond in his front yard. That's a lake. I've actually seen a gypsy out there in the backyard. This is my pond and one of the rivers. I've been told it's not a matter of if my pond is going to give way, it's a matter of when it's going to give way. That pond is twelve feet deep, is that not right, mine? That's pretty as high as pond. That pond was not designed to carry the water flow coming from the school's retention pond. That scared me to death when I saw that. I said, if that pond goes away, gives way, as much water is in my pond, as much water is in the school's retention pond, I'm going to flood the whole bottom end of the county. But that pond is held up. I had been told by civil engineer, I've got more water coming on me at one spot than has ever been before. And that pond is not designed to handle that kind of water volume. I go back here, item three. Your rules. Subdivision is designed to not create adverse effects on adjoining property owners. I had an opportunity to meet Del Phillips. I had several conversations with Del Phillips. Every time I met with Del Phillips before we left, we want to be a good neighbor. Every single time I met with him, we want to be a good neighbor. If you want to be a good neighbor, fix this. If you want to be a good neighbor, put a fence around it.
Mr. Jones, give your address to the commission, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
I'd like to ask Jeff, do you come and read the letter from Mark Gregory?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, the next person signed, I just wanted to, just Mr. Jones to say that.
Okay.
Mark Gregory is my neighbor in the 210 here.
Okay, send your hand with that address, please.
Yes, sir, uh, my name is Jeff Stevens. I live at four sixty Upper Station Camp Creek Road, directly across from school, pretty much. Um, Mark Gregory is my neighbor and, uh, Mr. Jones is asking me to read the letter that he sent in since he was not able to be here. Dear members of the Southern County School Board, I am writing to raise your attention to a significant issue that has been adversely affecting my property at four three six Upper Station Camp Creek Road, particularly concerning the runoff water management resulting from the construction of the new Liberty School complex. Since purchasing our property in the fall of twenty twenty-one, my family and I have encountered persistent challenges due to excessive runoff flowing through our front yard. Despite our efforts, which included constructing a burn along the north side of our property and elevating our driveway at considerable expense, we continue to face difficulties managing the volume of water, especially during heavy rainstorms. The construction of the new school complex has significantly exacerbated this issue as the diversion of the water into our property has intensified. While we understand the necessity of flood control and retention pond construction, the burden placed on homeowners like myself was unexpected and unjust. After investing thousands of dollars in mitigating the runoff, we have made some progress in managing the situation. However, it remains unacceptable that we are compelled to shoulder the responsibility and financial burden of addressing the excess volume caused by the school construction. I implore the school board to explore solutions that will divert and decrease volume of runoff away from our properties, restoring the natural flow patterns and minimizing the impact on homeowners. It is essential that we find a resolution that ensures fairness and protects the well-being of all residents affected by the construction project. Thank you for your attention to this matter. I hope we can work together to find a satisfactory solution that addresses the concerns of affected homeowners like myself. Sincerely, Mark A. Gregory. Um, I'd also like to add, uh, since purchasing our home in July of twenty twenty-one, um, we have noticed significant increases in the runoff amounts. Um, the runoff amount coming out of the retention pond, uh, which is directly across the, the street from me, which is Mr. Jones', uh, retention pond. Um, it's so significant that we'll find fish all throughout our yard, because it's dragging fish out of the retention pond into our yard. Um, we got kids out there in buckets trying to take it to the creek. Um, the water has nowhere to go. It, it comes onto our property and just spreads out. Um, it's, uh, we basically tore down our house and built a new home. And the cost that we incurred in, again, raising our, the level of our foundation, um, and the amount of dirt that we had to bring in to try to get the water away from our home, it just, just seems like it's never going to end. So, it's a continuing problem. it just, just seems like it's never going to end. So, it's a continuing problem. Anyway, thank you, thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you very much, Mr. Stevens.
The next person to sign that is Mr. Ray Pomeroy.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ray Pomeroy. I live in 116 Long Hollow Way and, uh, the best laid plans. I've heard the phrase, most people think it's the best laid plans of mice and men. It comes from a book by John Steinbeck, but it doesn't. It comes from a poet named Robert Burns or or not be it, a Scottish poet of the 18th century. He was known as the plowman's barb and a farmer's poet. And in 1785, he was plowing his fields when he turned up on Mouse's desk with the mother and babies. And it deeply disturbed him and influenced him to write about it that evening. It really moved him. And the most famous line from this famous poem was born that night. It says, "The best laid schemes of mice and men, gang hap, daglade, and lay us not but grief and pain for promised joy." What that means is sometimes our plans just go, you know what, and people get hurt. Even the best laid plans sometimes go awry and people get hurt. So I'm standing here as a 20-year resident, believing in my heart that we could never have planned with intent to do this kind of harm to these neighbors. Yeah, we planned the construction of the new school. I don't think anyone intended this to happen, but it did. And it turned out to be adverse and damaging. And if you had seen the video properly, sorry about the formatting, but his driveway is actually dangerous. The water level is too deep to turn in there. And so it is dangerous and unacceptable. And this is clear. There are no easy paths to resolving it. I mean, everybody's been talking about it now. They've been asking for help for two years. And there have been discussions in terms like industry standards or best practices or how we've designed it the same way or things that make you think that it wasn't in the planning. It was just in the unfortunate outcome. Um, but it did turn adverse. And, um, the words that have been, that have been offered so far haven't stopped the flooding of Mr. Jones's pond or his ditch or his driveway or his neighbor's yards. And now we're here with a clear distinction between right and wrong that really must guide our decisions and actions. And we as a community, I mean, all of us as a community, we use leaders, charged with making certain that this kind of thing doesn't happen to individual citizens. We all have to fix this. We all have to pay for it and fix it. And then there'd be no good future in our community if we simply plow over this and are not moved by it and demonstrate through our actions the moral and ethical character that's required to correct it. Ask me to listen and look carefully again at item three for this line of this body's very own resolution, now therefore be it resolved of the Sumter County Regional Planning Commission as follows. The subdivision as designed will not prospectively, will not create adverse effects upon adjoining property owners, these people. That was approved in 2022 based on good faith and good planning. But since that resolution showed up the first time in 2022 in the apparently unrecorded version of this, we've seen that those plans went awry. And I don't think it's by anyone's intent, but the evidence is pretty clear those plans went awry. And so I urge you, please, at this point, hold fast to your resolution, provide the need and motivation of those who continue to work on this project to correct this issue before proceeding with the remainder of the project. And I know that requires a really tough stand on everyone's part. But this is not the first time these folks have asked for help. In fact, um, it's been two years of asking for help. It's fair to say that this is probably their very last chance for help. Requiring the applicants to fix this problem is in no way punitive. It's not some punishment for anyone. It's only a proper corrective action to bring results in line with intent, good intent from the original design of this part of the project. And I just, I, I hope that the entirety of our community can understand the damage and the pain done to individuals is not something that we should just plow over. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. The question of the last person to sign that is Mr. Jamie T. Sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner. Appreciate you so much. Uh, it is the role of, according to the Constitution, it's the role of the government to be limited and to protect the rights of citizens. And the government is made up by the citizens and we should never do more harm to one another than allowed. And that's a natural law. You go out on a playground, you go to, to war, there's always a right and wrong that's clear. And we have no right to take someone's property. That's, that's something that anyone sees from an early age. I don't think any, I, I do not believe any ill intent was ever made, uh, whenever this beautiful school was built. But we must remember that because it's a natural law that we defend the property that we have. And then the government's role, according to the Constitution, is to step in and make sure that there are no rights infringed, whether it be by citizen to citizen or by government to citizen, government to government. We just want to make sure that everything is protected and taken care of. So therefore, whenever that, this property, uh, when we're looking at the two, the two adjoining properties, we can't look at it, whether it be a cemetery, whether it be a school, whether it be a church, or whether it be just a neighbor. Either way, it's a neighbor and there's an adjoining property and we can do no harm to the neighbor beside us, whether it be intended or not. And so if, if Mr. Jones were to build a property that were to infringe upon the rights of his neighbor, school, and cause flooding in that property and make it unsafe and, and any of the same egregious activities that has been accidentally happening to Mr. Jones, if that was an accidental happening, then he would have to do the right thing before it would be adopted because it is the right of the citizen to be protected by the government in those rights. So, we've got to remember uh, the United States Constitution. Well, there would be many young men and young women who go off and swear and take an oath to defend that Constitution in our, in our United States, our courts. While they're defending that, that, you got to remember, they're defending giant egregious activities from overseas, but they're also defending the fact that we have a beautiful government that is respectful to the citizens and the neighbors to which it resides inside. So I got to read this, this statement because on that signature block, there's a certificate of accuracy, a score range for major subdivisions. Now, in with the last part of it, it says, "As designed, neither this subdivision nor adjoining property will be damaged, nor shall the character of the land use be affected by the velocity and volume of water entering or leaving the site." So, it's effective. It's unfortunate and I don't want any harm done on anyone, but it doesn't really matter what I want. I don't think it matters what we want as neighbors or as what Mr. Jones wants. It's just that he has a right to be protected. So therefore, as a government representative of him, I have to request that you commissioners will please not allow any movement forward until he is rectified. And if it's not him, if it's someone else, because we are talking about not just any neighbor, we're talking about education. And so when we're educating children, we must show them that when we have the ultimate high ground, we got to also choose to take the moral high ground and stand up for the one who no longer has physical high ground. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Before, before we go back to the sessions, is there anybody else who wants to speak to the session? Sir, uh, say your name and address, please.
My name is Ryan Phelps. I live on 455 Upper Station. I missed the signing thing, sorry. But I am Anthony Jones's son-in-law. And me and my wife, we got our property tracked graciously from her granddaddy, her daddy. And where, where the driveway that you see in the videos of the water running off the pond and it goes underneath. So my culvert underneath my driveway is 14 inches. The culvert leaving the pond, their retention pond, what is it, like 364 or something like that? So you have a retention pond in the school complex, A through 12, but actually the high school and the, the parking that goes up to the football field, that section of the school and the flat roof of the high school drains into that section which drains into that retention pond, which is supposed to be slow as it flows out, but then it's really just cut off at its fence property corner and just pushing onto its property. So it overruns this pond and goes into my drive. The, the culvert I have in my driveway, it doesn't even accept it. It just floods all around it and it washes out my crush line every two or three months. And then it goes into a tiny culvert underneath the street. So eventually what's going to happen is pond's going to give way. The Sumter County school or the Sumter County road is going to get ate out by erosion over time. So eventually it's going to have effect about 10 foot, 10 years worth easily. So the resolution needs to be to stop the water amounts from coming onto our properties and to fix the culvert issue that is adjoining that school property into the road and then to take it out to Mr. Jeff Stevens, some sort of different way. But if this retention doesn't get resolved, I mean, eventually it's going to have long-term effects where people drop them down the street. And, uh, what would happen if it just gave out and people wrecked or something, you know, down the road? The roads aren't designed to take on what's going on. So when they built the property, the school complex, they didn't take into consideration of anybody that was downstream from that. And, um, cutting off the two dirt areas that goes to his cattle, luckily he has a, a spring-fed pond that his cows can drink from, or else they were getting water from those creeks, which are now dry, um, which they funnel water onto his pond, which you could see. So that's really all I have to say.
Thank you very much. School superintendent Scott Lanford, please come forward.
Scott Lanford, 1260 Flotsam Cross in Billisville, Tennessee, 37072. Um, I want to say first off, like, I mean, my family's been in Chatlauter, excuse me, in Upper Station Camp since 1886. Like, it takes a lot of time. Um, I, here's the dilemma that I am in. I understand your plight and I want to address, and we will address it. It meets all the industry standards for runoff. The siblings of yours have looked at it. I believe yours has looked at it. It meets the requirements. And I hear what you're saying, there's a difference simply whether it meets the requirements of runoff and whether it meets your leads, your house and neighbor's houses and everything like that. What we have before you tonight is absolutely nothing to do with drainage or runoff. In fact, I can't, you know, we have to close this out. We have a sewer that we cannot connect. It's been operation, been ready for operation for almost two months. Uh, we are having to, I'm about to start losing maintenance bid because they're tired of having to haul sewage a couple of times a day, every day. Uh, that's the dilemma that we're in. We can't, I can't force a contractor to go out and address the problem when they have met the legal requirements of the contract. I can't say, go fix the runoff and drainage there when it meets the siblings and your standards for the plat. We can go out and look and try to fix it. And we, I, you know, it may not be much to you, but I can give you my word that we can go out and look and see what we can do to fix it. Uh, that bothers me. I mean, I see what you're showing and it bothers me that that's going on. Uh, we want to go certify and get looked at. Um, I mean, you know, Mr. Harrison will do anything in the world to make something right. He's a great civil engineer. But we'll make sure that it's right with the neighbors, but we can't. Um, if we hold up this plat, we are holding up the sewer being connected after a crazy journey of almost two years of getting sewer built. We are holding up, uh, being able to move forward to potentially register the roads, the public roads so we can take, have the full safety requirements on the full path plan. We're getting complaints every day that they're driving too fast and things like that. We will be, Mr. Southern mentioned, we will be putting the top trim on this week, but between this, end of this week and the next week. So we'll be ready to move forward with that process. Um, completely agree that we don't want to do any harm to a neighbor. We've tried every word we can to fix those issues. And I was a huge farmer. When we finished, was it? Okay. I've been on the job since July 1st. I've dealt in as good faith as I can with everybody. I'm happy to try to address the concerns where they're, where they're legitimate, to do whatever we can do to make it better. But we can't stop, um, we can't stop registering a plat that really doesn't have anything to do with drainage. I want to fix the problem, but holding up a plat that denies sewer connection and fixing the road doesn't accomplish that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lanford.
Captain Baker 4240, we wrote, I wasn't going to say anything, but you know, over the years, sitting, watching these proceedings, both here and other committee meetings, we oftentimes hear of runoff issues that we're constantly having to address. We're going back after the fact and throwing money at things because for whatever reason, our engineers miscalculated or underestimated. You know, when you look at some of the numbers that we use to calculate runoff rates, like 100-year storms, I'll tell you, we have a 100-year storm every, every month or so around here. The way it rains, I don't know how you can calculate, you know, based on these average numbers. And, and when you're seeing real-life examples of failures, if there's not an engineer on earth that would say, after I've seen something fail, I'm going to continue down that path. Boeing, we're seeing what happens with Boeing right now. We, we can't let these people suffer. And, and if, if we got issues, we're seeing real-world examples. I don't care what the, the drafting table of the engineering calculations show. We're seeing real-world examples of failures. It would, it would be irresponsible of us to let it go through this way. And, and I, I sympathize with the school system. We have to get this resolved, but also we can't do it at expensive citizens. That's just not right. That's scary. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. If everybody's spoken, we can go back into session. I called back into session. All right. Well, thank you, everybody, for, uh, your presentations and your, your words. Uh, this is a dilemma. Uh, is there any comments from the commission?
Oh, I have so many. Um, we are at a terrible spot right here. Sewer needs to get hooked up. Nobody wants to dispute that. But this has been going on for years and these people have been asking for years for help and they've not gotten it. And they, oh, we want to be your neighbor and, oh, we're going to look at it and, oh, we'll help you do this. And then we hear the same thing. And I doubt that Mr. Lanford could possibly, it is sincere. I, I think that, I don't think he wants to see, to see that happen. But it's all been said before. And so I feel extremely conflicted about all of this, truthfully. I, I, I don't, that needs to be fixed for Mr. Jones and, um, for Mr. Stevens and Mr. Gregory or for anybody else who, um, you know, if all of those things give way, which eventually they will because they are not designing for that. And then you're looking at the Dixons, the Robinsons and everybody in, in that area. And that's doing harm. And in our own, in our own bottles, we said, we're not going to do that. So that's all I have to say right now.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Um, I agree with Commissioner Holmes. I really want to see the sewer go to the school like as soon as we possibly can. So, uh, but I also understand, I mean, we saw it in my video. It's terrible. Um, I really care what the industry standards are when it goes that way, that number three, that is doing harm. Um, so, but I want, I want to ask the So, but I want to ask any advice in the law director, if that's possible, to, I mean, does one have anything to do with other, like, I don't even know, just lucky advice, please.
Go ahead.
The plat has been reviewed, been reviewed, made specifically for purposes, it's the road issue and the sewer issue. So it's within the frame, there's in the scope of what it's here to be reviewed for. The other issues are ancillary to why it's here today, I'm not saying the problems don't exist, but I don't know that the passage or not passing this plat changes any legal standing that these adjacent owners may have in pursuit of remedy, and I just, this, I don't think the remedy that needs to be addressed really is encompassed in what we're hearing on the plat today. You've got enough work to do that, if you want to make a condition upon those items, but to me, this is two different things.
Commissioner, sir?
I just have a question, I said, I know this has been going on for a while, I'm just wondering, who this is currently, is this with somebody within the county, is it just with the school department, or, you know, who's, who was this complaint originally filed with, and where, do we know where that sits, or why that's ending up with us rather than with that body?
Yeah, well, the drainage issue goes back to, you know, frankly, the Sheriff's Sale Long piece of property, there's a gentleman in the Sheriff's Sale Long property across the road, and I had drainage complaints on the property across the street going back from when I started in twenty eighteen, which was prior to school construction, so there's a long-standing drainage issue in that area. We've taken a look, with the county engineer and I have looked, there's, my opinion, and I'm not an engineer, but my opinion is that there's a case of drainage issues within the road itself and the way that it drains across the road. The water has to make, has to make right-hand turns, two or three times, four times, to try to get its way back down to the creek, also go down to the creek, hopefully all that property that went down across the lake is under floodplain, once you go past the surf point. And so, so to any rate, the drainage issues there are long-standing, long-standing drainage issues. This particular issue, I think we became aware of during school construction, but the videos they saw there were a lot of really dirty water leaving the site, and so that in case of any school construction was unknown at that time in that particular area, that good place. And so it's on school property, I mentioned that we do inspections on school property for good housekeeping, it's part of our department, and that's always basically to check the boxes or T-bag, to, you know, if there's issues, we get with the schools and face them. And so drainage issues that are on all school property are the respectful responsibility of the school district, I think, with their resources.
Would the drainage onto the road there, that, is that a county road?
That's right, that's right.
Or have it become part of the counties?
The drainage within the road, I think there's, we've, we've, with Mr. Jones and the county saying, Mr. Suddens, you know, they're responsible to the neighbors in there in Cleveland, I'll discuss that. There's a solution there, within the road, now, upstream was coming from the school site onto this, into this pond, that's for engineers and lawyers to argue about, to be honest with you, about how much water was going into the site beforehand, you know, it wasn't best engineer practices will follow, the pond generally has to go in the place where it naturally accumulates. And so, that, again, unless we're lawyers, it's hard, we belong to each other and engineers, but within the road, there's a solution that to help alleviate some of the drainage issues that are going on in the road, but that still doesn't help you down across the road, right? So if you, that's the way drainage works, is you face it upstream, you start causing problems downstream, you have to start downstream to work your way up sometimes. And so there's, I think, through drainage issues across the road there, the water having trouble getting to the creek, it's very flat, pond's out, people building houses and rebuilding houses in the area, there's very floodplain. In the road, there's a lot of natural drainage issues that the county probably needs to take a look at at some point as well, and then upstream, like I said, to the school site, and Mr. Jones, I don't know, there's, there's, there's a lot of engineering analysis that goes into that, so I'm sure.
Thank you. You can go ahead.
Did that, so I looked at for the school?
Mr. Grove's sale, I've watched the numbers from, like, going back to twenty eighteen when I started, twenty seventeen, before, now, how bad it was, I don't know, I don't know about the details, well, I don't know, I have pictures in my files right there, I'm looking for them, but there are drainage issues happening, again, that area's in the floodplain, it floods naturally, when we have big drainage back there, and so there are long-standing drainage issues now, as far as coming from, I don't know, I don't know what, if that pond was happening back then, I don't know, I don't know.
Could I entertain a motion to suspend the rules? Commissioner, teacher would like to speak again. Motion, and second, on favor.
Thank you so much. Just very quickly, it's interesting watching this, I think y'all have your work cut out for you, and I appreciate everything you do, and I appreciate the citizens, I appreciate the school, we're in predicament, but the attorney said something that was, that kind of made me think a little bit, I thought, well, that's interesting, and then Mr. Suddens said something that made me think, what if there's a way to resolve all the issues at once? Because, as you said, we're trying to figure out, you know, the roads and the sewer, and then I just thought we had this beautiful sewer right there, I was pun intended, but we have a sewer right there, and is there a way, I'm not, I'm not an engineer, but is there a way that while we're heading into that, that we can divert that water into that sewer, it's already right there, it seemed like it'd be an easy fix, but is that a possibility, and is there a way to entertain that? Something I don't know, but...
The sewer lines are, in ways, yeah, you can, and so we, with our, our number to say, the same as, we're, we're just a little separate sewer system, so we, we have to keep form of our separate from the sewer system.
I was thinking that might be a way to solve those problems, I think.
Yeah, I don't think, they used to have sewers that way, that, which I was particularly, they'd get into oceans, so it was that good that we are minded about that.
Thank you, Commissioner, teacher. Oh, I'm sorry, we're back in session. Well, I, I think there are several issues, and Mr. Suddens is right, I've spent a lot of time on this project, there's a couple of things that are happening. I don't know the legal ramifications of it, but I know that three waterways across Mr. Jones's property have been cut off by thirty-six-inch RCP storm right line, and I know in conversation with Dwight Dixon, who owns the farm across, directly across the street, that the culvert that used to flow almost year-round has been completely cut off as well. So I know for a fact that the natural routes that had, that the property had seen in that general vicinity, that's been changed. I can't speak to the amount of water now, I can only listen to what people have to say and believe them or question, you know, what they have to say. So as far as the amount of water, I know that the numbers were crunched by engineers. Having been a builder for a long time, I know that engineers do sometimes make mistakes. So I think the point we might be at right now is in the conversation with Mr. Suddens and Mr. Sittler. I don't know that with the protections built into the plans and what we're trying to accomplish tonight, if, and I'll need, I'll need opinions from both of you gentlemen on this, if we approve this plat map, is there still remedy available to the neighbors in that area?
Okay, I mean, that's a legal question, but I would have to... There have been legal remedies available. This, the planning here is, I understand, two specific things. This problem has been going on for quite some time as far as the drainage issue, from what I'm hearing tonight. This drainage is just going to be an issue whether people agree on this plat or don't agree on this plat. So to me, the question becomes, do we get in compliance with the sewer issue, do we get that roadway accepted? This is the opportunity to do that as far as this plat and what was on, in front of this commission today, because regardless of which way this goes, the other problem still is out there that does have legal remedy tied to it. I'm not, I think a quick consult with an attorney, if you're a property owner, might enlighten some people, but I'm not going to give advice from here for the general public, but there's always been remedy here just maybe, and it really is two different things.
Is the remedy anything short of a lawsuit in your legal opinion?
You're asking an attorney. I'm like, I'm on the shore. Unless there's one beautiful agreement, everybody sits down and agrees to a bunch of terms, but I really don't want to go down that road because I think that's going to fall on the school board, making all these decisions and coming up with everything, so I don't want to extend out anything that I can't go back and be a part of, so I have to invest some money for how you want to see with their attorney in pursuit of that.
Okay, Mr. Suddens, from a planning and engineering standpoint, can you add anything?
Well, just to back up what Mr. Suddens said, you know, drainage issues are certainly the school's effects, if there are any, and if engineers, you know, if the engineers that live in, on the other side of the question, feel like there are issues that they resolve, any expensing property liability, plenty of this, wheelhouse is going to fall on schools around the county, certainly a planning issue on that. And the approval of this plat, I don't know that it's, you know, if anything, you guys are requiring the engineer to certify that there are no drainage issues, that the drainage design meets engineering standard and that it is not causing damage downstream, and so if anything, this, and this might not be a popular thing, so if anything, the approval of this plat admits, admits, this engineer signed that, signed those statements, and so you actually end up with something more in the last group than if you have it, it's not approved, then that regard, and the property never do.
One of my concerns has been for, for since I became aware of this, is that that road now is becoming damp, especially if the stock pond down broke. We, for all I know, that's an old life drain way, and could be at ninety-eight percent convection, but it could be something substantially under that. Do we have, I would have a real problem if we, not that it couldn't happen tonight, if it ran really hard, but what kind of liability is the county left with, in, now or after we sign off on the plat?
The way you use the word, that takes it into lawyer's court, so I mean, I can give my amateur interpretation on drainage law, and I kind of think that, I think, just purely as an administrative side of things, that, you know, I'll refer, I'll take it from another situation, developer, say a residential developer, partial developer does a residential development, but this body approves, and then my office approved drainage plans for it, everything else. And that developer causes damage to adjoining property owner via form of runoff. But again, just as purely as a, as an amateur that deals with these legal issues, drainage law, as I understand it, the state of Tennessee requires that the county has zero liability, all liability falls on the developer owner, the developer property, the developer who causes the issue. There's a critical case against sites, and their, and their opinions, it's very, very clear that, I think, it's just something like, no, no board has been as brave as to, as to, you know, assign the responsibility for developers' mistakes to the open body or to the city or county. And so if there are any issues, the approval of plats, like it doesn't probably accept the road, but also, as far as I am as administrator, it doesn't imply any liability that you accept for drainage issue for the county. The school board is another issue, the school system, with the project that they've done, I mean, everyone's, did the project, they are, they are the developer in this instance, I would say, and so there may be some kind of liability there, I don't know.
Mr. Sittler, do you have an opinion?
I've got a compliment. Mr. Suddens, on his legal disclaimer before he gives you an answer, I agree a hundred percent with what you're saying, I've actually, based on some input from him on what to expect tonight, did a little bit of research on it myself, and we would be loading on the total quota of the county, I can see this first one is going to be whoever signed off on it, and then secondly, whoever the project is for, and I think it would end up being a school board issue at that time. I can't guarantee we wouldn't get thrown into something, just in general, I'm not speaking to this specifically, but I'm a firm believer in that everybody gets sued, you see who's standing at the end of the finals, but I think we've done the best we can to protect ourselves as a county, the way that Mr. Suddens just explained it.
Thank you. All right, well, we, we have a decision to make.
Can I just quick comment? The last, one of the last videos was probably six months old, so it was very, it was very recent, so I just want to throw that out there, that it's not, it wasn't two years old, or was, whatever, but it was very recent. And then, so, I don't know, I guess this is still legal, like a legal question, but Director Lanford said that it was the contractor's fault, but if they are the, not the homeowner or whatever, then, so I guess that, that's legal issues, and so they blame, and I guess that keeps going through the, they blame the contractor, the contractor blames them, it just goes through that way?
What else works? The one, that any developer that began to dispute with about drainage issue, they, the first thing they did was phone the contractor.
Well, I think there have been firms involved at some level and have tried to, you know, navigate through this as, in a friendly fashion, and I guess it hasn't gone very well.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Suddens is right, in my experience in these kinds of situations, it, as a developer, if we had a problem with a storm drainage, we would go right back to the engineer and contractor and figure out where the error was, and so, you know, first thing will have to be determined, is there, was there an error? And I don't even know that I can determine that, because I don't, I never saw what runoff was when that was still farm, the brown farm, the green farm, I think it was. So, but I think if that's a doctor, I'm pretty intimate, that the engineers is fully responsible for this, and if the contractor did it according to the plans and specifications of the civil engineer, then the civil engineer is responsible.
Gotcha, and then one other thing, and I know that there has always been a little bit of flooding, and I know that Mr. Dixon has not necessarily enjoyed the flooding, but he did water his hayfield, so that, you know, kind of was a little bit of a thing. But to my understanding, Mr. Jones's property had never been affected by that, across the street, yes, but beside that, no, so I'm just saying, it seems to be...
Well, what I'd like to take away from this is that there was some assurance that this will be looked at deeply, because if what you're saying is true, then Mr. Jones not only needs to have the excessive water that's running through his stock pond reduced to whatever it was in the past, but that his three other waterways, the very back of his property and the two intermediate ones are put back to right, so that he has the water, I mean, water rights are huge, two hundred years ago, even... I mean, water rights are huge, two hundred years ago, even a hundred years ago, and I think they're still valuable. Are there any other questions, any other statements? Does anybody have a motion they would like to make? I know it's a tough one, but we have to have some work with it.
Mr. Chairman, seeing that this doesn't seem to be directly related to what's involved us, I'm going to make a motion.
We have a motion to approve between the item one and do we have a second? Second, I wish you a good one.
I do want to say second.
Okay.
I seconded this on the advice of our law director and our planning director. I wish that there was a way that I think, or we as a body could, I mean, that definitely have need legal standing according to the law director to do this. I would love, I mean, the director of school said that he gave us our word, so I'm going to really hope and pray that he does what's right. Because I just, I mean, I just don't think this is, unfortunately, the, our place of worrying about our law director to, I mean, I just, I don't think one does affect the other, but we also need the sewer connected to the school. So it's not our decision, I'm torn because I want the school sewer to be connected. I think that's our thing to do, but also I think it's right to fix Mr. Grounds and all the people that are having issues in properties. So just an expression, thank you.
Before we vote, Mr. Suthers, is there any way that we can hook up that sewer without approving this final plat?
Well, I know that the plat is the preferred option of one of those utilities. There may be other options as far as doing all these, it was by a separate instrument and that kind of thing. That does take care of the road itself, which also has to be plowed as well. The plat is a preferable way to record easements. The right of the course has to be plowed, so on that issue, question.
I'm guarantee you're right, that there is a way or there may be a way.
There may be another way, I don't know.
Without hand, you can't.
No, they would have to be, all they did do was have to do that and then record it by, at least as far as I'm concerned, record it by the, the plat is always the preferred way to get visually depicted, you know, easements and that kind of thing. Speaking of the White House, I'm trying to, I don't know, but at least that's my understanding of how they feel. They probably say they don't have preference, I don't know. At least in my office, we would prefer to see the easement so we know where it is. We will be legal attrition on where the easement is. I mean, nothing until you go out that another surveyor, you get a statement, that kind of thing. And so the plat is the preferred, there's a, you know, it could potentially, I guess, possible to do it by these amounts of tractions or part of a separate instruments and that kind of thing. It's a lengthy process and it's expensive. Again, the road has to be plowed at some point, and so that has to be done by plat.
Yeah, they were actually paying it today when I was over there. Mr. Suthers, do you have any opinion on that?
I don't ever like suggesting that you deviate from the way you were here to do so because that's the best defense, anything you do in the future is why to do it because it's how I want to do it. So I would not recommend trying to take some alternate steps in this one because other people are going to start asking for it too, and then it becomes a ton of problems.
Okay, fine, all right, we have a motion and a second. Has a second?
Chairman, do you read that motion again?
The motion is to approve item one with A and B, is that correct, Mr. Suthers? Yes, and then the second with Commissioner Miller is, okay. So if there are no other questions, we go ahead and vote. All in favor, we're going to do a roll call on this one, sorry.
Commissioner Holmes?
No.
Commissioner Miller? Mr. Williams? Mr. Issa?
Okay, the motion passes through the board. Thank you, everybody. Josh, you're up.
Mr. Chairman, the next item on the initiative is to approve road and driveway designation for Lumber Station Camp Road. This is another, another right of way plat, so I don't know what it rings for. This is, this plat, like the last one, it's very different from the last one in a lot of ways, but it did do the base of the right of way as well as utility easements, particular utility easements. This right of way is located between Base Station Camp Road Boulevard and Public Seaside Lumber Station Camp Road Boulevard. This subject property is owned by an industrial, by a case one point five acres of public right of way. It's owned by Robert Truitt. The subject property is, ownership of the right of way is a little bit more complicated, we'll discuss it here in a moment. Back at Civil Income and County Entry and the surveyor, Tom Spesker. I don't think either of those gentlemen are in attendance this evening. I think Mr. Mark, David Springer, I think, and Mr. Mark, I believe, is in attendance here this evening. I'm speaking to this particular item. Looking at the tax plan here, you might see that there is no right of way shadow element, right? This is just a piece of property. And so I'm only explaining why that is certain, it's kind of unusual, this is a very big situation. But this is such a property. Base station, local, this is Lumber Station here, connection comes to, there used to be a connection back there that went through Roger's route property. And that's in the city of Andersonville, the city of, it's running there somewhere. And it was abandoned years ago and came over to the Rogers, the Rogers route by the city. This is an area of subject property. Again, you see the right of way is there and for the sound plan, if you don't see this, it's below the roads and the right of ways. It's shown. So we're looking at official maps, city gallons, and this is that weird, no land, land there. I believe there's always problems, issues, but who's in charge of what and who's lying and that kind of thing. So this is such a property right here, it's an old, like, red island right here that's surrounded by city gallons and city Andersonville. So a little background on this, what happened here was this right of way was constructed by Roger's route at its sole expense, what they did was they approached the county and the city of Andersonville and offered to build this road in exchange for the county, or actually the city, I guess, dedicating, I don't know, the city dedicating the old Lumber Station Camp Road, it goes right through the middle of Rogers Truitt's campus, you might call it, or their property. They were going to build this new road, if the city and county, if the county had any, would abandon any right of way that went through their property. So that's what happened. The city, the Rogers Truitt built this road, it's like thirty-eight foot wide pavement section, like a big industrial high road. And it was, it was completed and was accepted by the Southern County Commission on August nineteenth, twenty nineteen. However, for whatever reason, and I don't know exactly what the bill was back then, but we did not think there was a good understanding at the highway department that this was supposed to be plowed. They were letting the road, I think, because the road through Rogers Route, there was an underpass over Riverway Track. It was very narrow, very dangerous, dangerous, everybody called. And so the county was probably through, I guess, is what it was to hit this road. And so it agreed, it never got planted. And so they came to us wanting to plant this right of way and some utility easements that parallel it. And when we first looked at it, we said, well, I think, you know, we can rip this to the bottom of the plat. It's already been accepted by the county commission, they basically sit the step. And so that was the initial stance that I took in reviewing it. But as I dug into it a little deeper, I noted that if your white utilities water main either, it's going to touch the right of way. And so the line itself is not, I don't think, of the right of way exposed, but the line itself is not certain in the pavement. But it does go through a piece of the right of way, which is not unusual. Any subdivision, you go through like several lines in the right of way and that kind of thing. That's very common. Water lines typically are outside of the right of way, but if they're playing that, they cross the right of way and go through the right of way and can. So this, this water line that they're going to install won't necessarily pavement, but it would with the right of way. And so because that's the case, I'm not, I'm not sure, but it has to be planted. And so from our perspective, again, looking at it from the tax perspective, is it problematic that this never got planted the way that it was supposed to? It seems like a formality, probably a little bit of what I had, you know, supposed to get in the road. People will say, well, we're not going to take it, you hire surveyor, do all the survey stuff, you know. And so, but it's still problematic. The problems that it caused, like I said, on the accessory tracks, that right of way is not shown. That's because plaques are how they figure out where the right of way are. It's, that's, they actually look at the plaques they've gone through and the E W G version of it, or sometimes they just look at the paper plat and they'll put the meets and bounds in and they're drawing that right of way on the tax papers. I was informed by the county's B nine one office that they didn't even have record. What I talked about, how the road was built, that old road management, they didn't know. It never looks, the old road, the Rogers, it's still above the road. Again, that's because the process kind of broke down and it didn't get planted. So this would fix that. They actually reached out to me and let me know and see what was going on with it. But they weren't clear that this would actually go the right of way where it's supposed to be called, that the old right of way is supposed to be called. They looked at that property road, it's still named Lumber Station Camp Road through Rogers Route, which is confusing and that has to change. So they'll, they'll, they'll work with Rogers Route to rename that property road, I would imagine. So this lack of help to facilitate getting all that done. And then adding easements along the right of way, again, this seems like not that big of a deal. You accept the right of way, maybe we got this right of way, but you have to know where it is in space because stuff's always changing around it. And we planted easements, that's what brought this one to us, actually, was the easement went through and they realized it touched the public right of way and White House said, this has to be plowed. And they were very correct, and it doesn't be plowed. And so that's how it ended up coming forward with the county commission. Because it's very difficult to add easements by meets and bounds, and you don't really have any attrition where that right of way is actually. And for various reasons, as I said, this has to make sure it doesn't make you subdivision. So if rivers within the existing right of way, other than like repairing construction sidewalks and hydrants, that if you have that, it's a major subdivision. If you're dedicating a other right of way or easement for restoration, any public utility, that department would be planted and then anything that might park construction plans and that kind of thing would probably be planted as well. So this is a whole lot of burrage right here. But this, but this, this, that same burrage, that says things have to be planted. I don't think there's like a fatal flaw of the fact that the county commission accepted this years ago because there is an opt-out provision that the county doesn't, anybody can't accept right of way without it being approved by the county commission, but the county commission still has to see it. And so that just didn't happen a few years ago. And so this fixes that, it goes back and repays that and sets it right. So this is the final plat here. Again, there's a, there's a public water utility easement, there's a big water line that's to be installed right here. And it touches that public right of way. And so despite finding easements, there's a future fire hazard going around here and it would plow that public right of way as well. This is the resolution where the county commission accepted this public right of way at twenty-nine pavement. There's just some pictures where this is coming over three eight six. And there's pictures of the road, as you say. This is, this is a county main road, the highway department does make it so that's a good concern.
That's Big Station Camp Boulevard, right?
Uh, Lumber Station.
That's, okay, that's.
And this is another river road right here.
Really?
It's a little bit, they got it locked off there. So our finding, in fact, it's, it's, I don't know, they're not blaming culture, this is a suburban place. I've got nothing to contradict that, this is a light industrial area, heavy road going through a heavy industrial area. No subdivision or something, conflicts that I'm aware of, no adverse impacts. If anything, this road mitigates a lot of those really negative impacts of Rogers Route and the public drive through there was, was not as great. And then there's somebody that's going to benefit from this, public, that's changing benefit because Rogers Route. And then the files, I was able to find a letter from Rogers Route where they laid out their rationale why they wanted to do this. It was a risk mitigation strategy that they had to incorporate so that they keep the public from doing jobs outs. So the next steps, after approval, this plat being signed and accorded, accorded back, formalized the measures of the public right of way and utility and drainage easements. And then according to those easements will allow that watering to be extended, it's shown in the plat. It will allow us to do this, you said. So the chairman, there's the motions on the screen, A to approve, B to deny, or through to defer. I know there's so much party, we think that the series works at this side.
Thank you, Mr. Suthers. Does anybody have any questions?
Commissioner's say.
Make a vote, okay, Senator, Commissioner Holmes, all in favor? Okay, let's discuss.
It seems like another one of those backdoor handshake deals that was done by the previous administration. And I guess now we're asking for forgiveness and some permission, is that not, can I see it, Mr. Franklin?
Well, it's a county road at this point, I mean, I don't think there's any way to go back on it. When the road has been abandoned, the Rogers Route, when they forward up and things with it, you know, I think a little bit of circle, what would you want the public to start, to start going through there again? So it's a skip step, I think nowadays, things are just, I think they're just a little bit coming back then. But for whatever reason, the planning obviously wasn't really worked into the process. So we didn't see that we're involved in everything nowadays. If we're as, in fact, then it would really weren't as much. And so I don't know whether that's a good or a bad thing with this thing here, it's a list. But at any rate, I think if this happened today, we would be looking at it, we would be involved in this conversation a lot more. And it'll fix the fact that it just wasn't let ride in the first place. And it'll, it'll have a tight right of way that everybody can utilize the different compartments and that kind of thing.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, is there a second for this, there's a, any other discussion? I just want to say this straightens out a lot of things in my head because I've driven through there a lot and I could never figure out with my own right, the proper legal line. So, okay, well, if there are no other discussions, all, let's do a roll call, Kathy.
Commissioner Holmes? Commissioner Miller? Mr. Williams? And Mr. Issa?
Okay, motion passes, you may proceed.
Next item on the, in the district administrator's verbal decisions, minor plats. We've been on the agenda for you guys to look at. Nothing really, nothing big on that. Usually it's four to two, I'm actually good. As far as the directors update, I didn't have much to share today. We've been, we've been working at capacity, I feel like, here for a while. We would be taking to be very busy around the office, Kathy, I had to get back to you on that. It's, it's a constant chore, I think, for every permits and that kind of thing. So I think it's showing a little bit, and at least I speak for myself, I'm more type notes in these presentations and I feel like I'm forget things. So the good news is that the county commission, you guys created an assistant county planning position for us a while back, and we have extended an offer to an individual for that position. And they are scheduled to start, I think it's March eighth. And so I can't, I'm not going to disclose about it. As I said, capacity issues. As I said, capacity issues, we're able, able, so able, so a few weeks scheduled to come on and help. I think this person, I don't want to say that they are, I think they've changed behind it and not in order, but this person is very capable, has about ten years planning experience, I think, would be able to step up and help with a whole lot of things. And so my hope is that if you get somebody on, you know, spread the love around a little bit, for everybody, and for me particularly, and maybe for me, to think about some of this stuff too. And so, because right now, I feel like I'm going from deadline to deadline to deadline, and I feel like I have a little bit of tension sometimes, which I wish, so.
Yeah, I don't know how to do it, either of you. But hopefully, I'm sure I appreciate you guys doing that, and the voting, and so it's been voted, we did a whole lot of stuff in there, but I don't know if you're satisfied.
You did your homework, okay?
Okay. Twenty to the second, all in favor? Opposed?